Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Agaramati?
Here.
Councilmember Hunley?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Harrington?
Present.
Thank you.
Great, there's been no closed session, so we have no report on closed session. Next item is approval of the agenda. If anyone has any changes to the agenda, please say so. Otherwise, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, moving on to public comment. At this time, members of the public...
Roll call vote.
Oh, sorry. Thanks. Just trying to move through it too fast.
Councilmember Agaramati?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, unless otherwise permitted, under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone and begin by stating and spelling your name and giving your address. Thank you. Anyone? Public comment?
Hello? I have a loud mouth, anyway. Hi, my name is Betsy Griggs. That is B-E-T-S-Y-G-R-I-G-G-S. My address?
Oh, go ahead.
Is that what you said?
Your address, yeah.
Okay. 54 Guadalajara Drive in Sonoma. Okay. Oh, no. Don't tell me I just lost what I wanted to say. Hold on a minute, I'll get there, I'll get there. Okay, here we have it. I just have an issue about these dispensaries. I actually had written to you and you kindly responded, but I've still got some feelings here. I just don't remember when the... I don't remember when the marijuana dispensaries in Sonoma were on any ballot. I know about Proposition 64, but I don't know about any else. I thought that in 2020, they were going to be... The dispensary situation was going to be an issue. Or, I mean, an initiative on the ballot. And suddenly, I read in the paper that Sonoma is going to go ahead and put through for two dispensaries right away. And based on... I'm getting it based on... We're doing all of this based on how the people of California voted on the cannabis Proposition 64. I care more about what the people of Sonoma, the people who live right here, have to say about it. And I never really personally had a say. I've talked to a few people. They never had a say. It just happened. I understand the council was given some... A lot of leeway in how it was handled, but I don't remember anything about dispensaries was in that area. So, all I'm trying to say is... I don't feel that the people of Sonoma were given enough of a chance to have a voice in this. I feel it just was kind of... I'm saying it kind of roughly, but kind of rammed through. And I just wanted to get my opinion out there, and I just don't think it was handled very democratically. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. My name is Jamie, J-A-I-M-E, Peckham, P-E-C-K-H-A-M. And I also live at 54 Guadalajara in the city of Sonoma. And I'm here to speak on the same issue. I know that Proposition 64 was passed by the state of California, but I was also under the impression that the city of Sonoma was going to have an initiative on our own citywide ballot in 2020 to make a decision specifically about how the people in the city of Sonoma felt about having dispensaries in the city limits. And I felt like, now what I'm reading, is that the decision has already been made to have some. And I feel like the city council has circumvented the democratic process of having an actual ballot where people who live here can voice their opinion, yes or no. And I really do believe that getting a petition for 750 signatures to put something on the ballot doesn't represent, what, 10,000 people or so that live in the city? But there was some comment that was written in one of the newspapers that the initiative which gathered 750 signatures was qualifying for the ballot was a measure from the voters that they want to have reasonable regulations. Then hopefully, when the city council has dealt with it and we have one or two dispensaries, there won't be a need to pass the initiative. So, I too feel like the democratic process has been circumvented. And I'm very disappointed, because I've always felt that the city council works for us. And in this case, I feel like the city council is not working for us. I don't know who exactly. But, anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Matt Metzler, 1110 Fryer Creek Drive. I think most of us agree that we need to reduce the use of greenhouse gas-producing motor vehicles, and that improving bicycle transportation is a great way to achieve this goal. I'm here tonight because, in my role as the Community Services and Environment Commissioner, I've been seeking to improve bicycling in Sonoma for over two years now. And frankly, I haven't seen much progress. I think our city is behind the times on this issue. Hillsborough now has a bike share program. There was a major repaving project in Sebastopol that included extensive improvement to bike lanes. And much of the impetus for bicycle improvements I've seen in other similar cities have come from the city managers. We have a bicycle and pedestrian master plan that identifies 17 high-priority projects. Since it was updated in 2014, I've only seen a couple of the very small projects that have been completed, and that's since 2014. The biggest achievement I've seen has been the public bicycle repair station, which is a project of the library, not the city. I got an email from the Director of the Visitors Bureau asking why there's not more bicycle parking downtown. And I've been working for that issue for over two years and haven't... And I still don't know when it's going to happen. So, I'm just here because I'd like to keep in mind that we need to do more to make bicycling a viable transportation option. Bicycling should not be only for the fit and the brave. I bicycle a lot around Sonoma, and I often feel like I'm taking my life in my hands. When I choose to bicycle instead of driving my car, I feel like I'm a second-class citizen. At many major intersections around town, it's easier to drive through the intersection than it is to bicycle or to walk. Because of our flat terrain, mild climate, and gorgeous scenery, Sonoma could be a bicycling Mecca. But currently, our roadways appear to be for cars, not for people. So, in addition to reducing CO2 emissions, increasing bicycling will help us to reduce traffic and parking congestion. So, I urge you to add an item to a future city council agenda of what can be done to make our city more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly and to help to reduce the tyranny of the internal combustion engine on our streets. And thank you for your service to the city of Sonoma.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Morrison, M-O-R-R-I-S-O-N. And I live at 180 Wilkingway. And the last time I was here before the council, it was almost exactly two years ago. And the reason I came at that point in time was to make a request for funds to produce a movie on the history of Sonoma Valley. And at that point in time, the small seed grant was issued and was approved. And so, I'm here today to report that the film, at long last, is complete. And I want to express my very deep heartfelt thank you to the city, to the council, to everyone involved that made that seed grant possible, because the seed grant was an incredible springboard that enabled the project to get off the ground. So, the grant was made at the very beginning of the project, and it, in some measure, served as a seal of approval that the city thought this was a worthy project. And that led to another grant from the county, which led to the possibility of raising funds amongst private donors. So, I'm really pleased to say that the film will debut in about 10 weeks... Or 10 days, as part of the Sonoma International Film Festival, and then on March 29th at 9:30 in the morning. And then there will be a public showing at the Sebastiani Theater on April 5th at 6:00 p.m. And I hope everyone will join us at one of those two showings. Thank you very much.
Is there a website about the film?
There is. Call of the... The name of the film is Call of the Valley: The Enduring Lore of Sonoma. And the website is callofthevalley.net.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council and staff. Lynn Marie DeVincent, 65 Guadalajara, reporting in for the Sonoma Neighborhood Association, here to educate the city and public on safe technology. I hope you had a chance to look at the short video I sent you last week with the good news from Danville, a charming town with a population of 44,000, which is similar to our valley's size. Their city council voted four to one to deny the 5G cell tower permit. This news is important, because it shows that a city can protect its residents from these unnecessary cell towers. But there's another side to this. Danville, maybe you're saying to yourself, is an affluent city. It has the 14th wealthiest zip code in America. They can afford to be sued by Verizon. Well, does that mean that these toxic cell towers are going to get improved and installed where us poor folks live? In our neighborhoods, on the west side? The new Sonoma municipal code that's being written prohibits them around the plaza. The city needs to deny these permits. Let's ally with Danville, Santa Rosa, Petaluma, Napa, Hillsborough, everybody. Verizon isn't going to sue every city on the west coast. I've been doing public outreach on these applications for almost a year now. And with minimal budget and a small band of allies, we have canvassed, posted flyers, used social media, talked at the farmers' markets and council meetings and planning meetings. And I feel that the Sonoma Neighborhood Association still only represents a small percentage of our population. I respectfully request that you consider special notification on this project, so people are more aware of the potential harm to our community. In other news, the Sierra... The California Sierra Club has declared its opposition to the deployment of 5G and small-cell technology without local input and environmental review. That's really good news. And, more good news, the state of New Hampshire has introduced HB 522, establishing a commission to study the environmental and health effects of evolving 5G technology. Here's one of the questions before the commission. Why the insurance industry recognizes wireless radiation as a leading risk and has placed exclusions in their policies, not covering damages caused by the pathological properties of electromagnetic radiation? Why have thousands of peer-reviewed studies, including the recently published U.S. Toxicology Program, that show a wide range of statistically significant DNA damage, brain, heart tumors, and so many other elements been ignored by the FCC? I'm submitting copies of these documents to the public record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lane Tietgen. That's the last name spelled, T-I-E-T-G-E-N. I live at 2400 Grove Street. And I also would like to comment on the 5G cell towers that are certainly under... That are currently under review by the city. As we know, presentations regarding cell tower installations have to be largely limited to aesthetic matters. A thing that we might take into consideration is that a place like Sonoma remains attractive and comfortable to its residents, as well as to tourists and real estate investors, at least in part due to its charm and its suggestion of old-world values and styles. It is my opinion that an unchecked proliferation of cellular towers will, without doubt, sooner or later corrupt and downgrade the very things that make this town so attractive. 5G, in particular, requires a direct line of sight from one repeater to the next in order to function properly. This comes out in practice to mean that annoying physical features, like trees, would have to go, and that the neighborhoods and homeowners' opinions are of no consequence permanently. That the cell providers essentially have more power over some parts of a residence property than the tax-paying citizen does may eventually raise issues. But aesthetics do matter. The feelings of comfort and hominess that a resident or potential resident sees senses in a neighborhood or public area are valuable not only on the day-to-day lifestyle level, but also in real estate value terms. Once these towers are installed, that bell cannot be unrung. And once again, the towers have to be able to see each other in order to function properly. This would mean that people from the outside, who have no feeling for or interest in the values of the community in which they're working, would maintain these towers as they see fit. When I put some study in this matter, I saw video presentations of clusters of repeaters pointed in series through residential areas with all the natural features removed from among and between the installations. Their flat rectangular faces and the support poles behind them began to remind me of 18th-century paintings of sails and masts of an invading naval force. Is this all worth it? Are we in that big a hurry? Commerce certainly has its place, but we ought not to have to make a choice between corporate and community values. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia Raneker, 300 Second Street East. The city of Sonoma has the means and the ability to function on renewable energy. And because the city functions on clean energy, the city lights all the trees in the park with thousands and thousands and thousands of LED lights at Christmas. In order to do that, the city recruits a professional lighting company from another city to come several days in a row to install and uninstall the thousands of lights, resulting in an oversight of a carbon footprint. Whether the city lights the trees or not has no effect on the city's ability to function, nor its ability to govern. The city is not compromised, making the lighting of thousands of lights unnecessary and a waste of time and money for the city. I understand there are those who praise the city with approval and accolades, enticing the city to continue its behavior of overindulging them with all the lights. They will use words like "beautiful" and "tradition" to get the city to assume responsibility for responsibilities the city is not responsible for. Okay, then there are those who only want what they are due from the city: safety and peace. And because of all these reasons, I am asking you to consider this solution to reduce your carbon footprint that causes harm to no one, in order to honor those that want the city to give them beautiful and tradition, and in order to honor those that want only what they are due from the city: safety and peace, and in order to honor our most beautiful and giving planet that we are killing with our self-serving ways. It is only reasonable and fair to eliminate all the lights on the trees at Christmas and to continue with our original tradition of a beautiful but modestly lit city hall with its tree and its stable until it is no longer safe to do that. Okay, because 2018 was the fourth hottest year on record, and because Greenland is melting four times faster, and because it appears that the city is going on as if nothing is happening, it only makes sense to make your decision about this solution at the next city council meeting. And I will be there, and I say that with all due respect. And I think this compromise, or this decision that I've offered you, is the most... I consider it to be where everybody is equally valued and respected. So, I'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I'm Beth Hadley, 18488 Fourth Avenue. And I want to thank the city council for banning glyphosate in all city parks and along the bike path in January. As a lot of us know, glyphosate was classified as probably carcinogenic to humans by the World Health Organization's International Agency for Research on Cancer in March 2015. More than 4,000 people are currently suing Monsanto, alleging they have developed cancer from using Roundup. And several countries are moving to limit the use of these herbicides, including Germany, France, Belgium, Italy, Brazil, India, and more. The council passed this ban for the city parks and the bike path and also directed the staff to bring the issue back in March and consider a full ban. However, the meeting was pushed back, because the council asked Public Works for information about where and when the glyphosate is sprayed. And because of rains, there has not been any spraying, so the data does not exist yet. So, the meeting has been pushed back until the second meeting in April. However, it's possible the city council does not actually need to wait until the city uses glyphosate again to report on where glyphosate is used. The report could be on where glyphosate would have been used if there was no ban on its use. There's... I mean, there's already a plan in place of where it's regularly used, so I hope you'll look at that. And I urge you to discuss and implement a full ban as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Hi, my name's Jamie Stork. I'm a beekeeper here in Sonoma, and I've been a beekeeper for five years. Just wanted to go on record saying, save the bees. We don't want spray. And also wanted to introduce an alternative. For the record, a weed killer alternative, which is one gallon distilled white vinegar, two cups Epsom salt, and a fourth of a cup of dish soap, like Dawn dish soap, you know, Costco dish soap, whatever dish soap you have. This is great. It works well. My 15-year-old uses it and sprays for me. I'm not going to let a 15-year-old spray something like Roundup, not that I would use it. But he's been spraying this since he was 12 on our property, on the weeds, where he wants to have stuff controlled, and it does work. So, it's safe for kids. It's safe for people to use. And it's a great alternative. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Ichor, E-I-C-H-A-R. Excuse me for venting about three items which were supposed to be on tonight's agenda but are not. Glyphosate, also known as Roundup. The city council voted to have the staff come back before the city council at the end of March to present information about where the city is spraying glyphosate. According to the city's integrated pest management policy, the IPM coordinator is supposed to maintain records of all applications of pesticides and herbicides on city property, including location, date, name of product, active ingredient, amount applied, targeted pest, or plant. These records should be readily available to the city council. I don't know why it's not on the agenda tonight, even if just to continue to a future date. If the city council voted to place an item on the agenda for a specific date, how can staff remove the agenda without consent of the city council? Housing impact fees. I understand that housing impact fees and related affordable housing issues can take time... Significant staff time to prepare the necessary documents. However, it's been two years since the Nexus Study on Housing Impact Fees was first presented to the city council. Two years. How many thousands or tens of thousands of dollars has the city lost because of delay on implementing the housing impact fee? This brings me to the 1% increase in TOT to support affordable housing. City staff last year estimated that a 1% increase in the TOT would result in $375,000 in revenue in 2019. We are about to enter the tourist peak season, where occupancy rates and room rates reach their peak. Based upon the past two years, a 1% increase in the TOT would bring in between $45,000 and $55,000 a month from June through October. So, each month of delay is costing the city some $50,000. Increase the TOT now and work out the details of the Housing Trust Fund over the next few months. I ask you tonight to put the 1% increase on the April 1st agenda. So, please vote for that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one further come up to the podium, I will close public comment. And at this time, if anyone has a meeting dedication they'd like to make, please make it. No? None? Okay. Item 3.1 is a presentation of the Sonoma County Water Agency budget. And our Director of Public Works will be doing that.
Mayor Harrington, members of the city council. As you know, the city of Sonoma distributes water throughout the city into the outside service area. Most of that water comes from what was formerly called the Sonoma County Water Agency. It's now called Sonoma Water, from an aqueduct that comes down Sonoma Valley. And we're fortunate that tonight, Finance Manager Lynn Roselli with Sonoma Water is here to present their budget. Of course, their water budget is important to our water system, because we buy water from them. So, their water rates ultimately affect our water rates. And it's my pleasure to introduce Lynn Roselli.
Thank you. Good evening. Presentation? Good evening. My name is Lynn Roselli, Sonoma Water. Thank you for having me, mayor, council members. We prepared a brief presentation for the city of Sonoma for the fiscal year 1920 water transmission budget and rates. We worked collaboratively with the Technical Advisor Committee Budget Subcommittee. We went through several iterations of the budget with the Budget Subcommittee. They provided comments. And we made changes and came back and finalized the budget, presented it to the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, on March 4th and was voted... March 4th or 5th? I can't remember. March 4th, and it was approved by the Technical Advisory Committee. The budget is based on 43,870 acre-feet in deliveries. That is 5% over the fiscal year 1819 budgeted water deliveries. Each line item that you see in the table generates revenue that allows us to operate and maintain the water transmission system, implement projects under the biological opinion, build critical capital infrastructure projects, pay for debt service on our outstanding bonds, maintain a prudent reserve. And we also have a line item that's under discretionary charges. It's a capital charge. It's an aqueduct capital charge. The water contractors provide input on that rate. Last year, the rate for the capital charge for a city of Sonoma, for Sonoma Aqueduct, sorry, was zero, because we were issuing bonds for the Sonoma Booster Pump Station project. But the city of Sonoma and Valley Moon Water District on the Sonoma Aqueduct decided to increase that to $27. That helps build fund balance for future capital projects. It also acts to stabilize rates going forward. So, the rate on the Sonoma Aqueduct is $1,048.80 per acre-foot, and that represents a 4.77% rate increase. The calculation for the rate is prescribed by the Restructured Agreement for Water Supply that's signed by all of the water contractors. And it takes the cost of operations and maintenance, divides by the quantity of water sold, and gives us the cost of water per acre-foot. The quantity of water sold has to be the lesser of the last 12 months of water deliveries or the three-year annual average water deliveries. And because of the drought, the three-year annual average water deliveries is lower than the last 12 months of water deliveries. than the last 12 months of water deliveries, so we have to take that lower number, and we do the math, and you can see that the rate comes out to $918 per acre foot, but that is for the Sonoma, Santa Rosa, and Petaluma Aqueducts. So your expenses are a little bit higher on the Sonoma Aqueduct primarily because of the Eldredge Pipeline project, the debt service on that project. So your expenses are a little bit higher, so your rate is a little bit higher. The budget is a $51.6 million gross budget. It is 54% operations and maintenance costs, 20% capital costs, 17% goes to the biological opinion projects and water conservation projects, 9% is debt service, and 7 million is used to offset those expenses with grants, bond proceeds, and use of fund balance. Expenditures compared to fiscal year 1819 budget, again, it's a $51.6 million budget. It's an increase of $11 million over fiscal year 1819. The reason primarily for that increase is that during the drought and the economic downturn, we tried to keep rates within that 46% that is informed by the long-range financial plan. In order to do that, we had to defer some maintenance and capital projects, but now we are able to not only build fund balance because we're delivering more water, but we're also able to implement some of those deferred maintenance and capital projects. Under operations and maintenance, we actually have a 10-year, $38 million tank maintenance program that we will be implementing. The first year of it is in fiscal year 1920, and 3 million is included in that, in the operations and maintenance budget to maintain the 18 tanks that we, storage tanks that we have that hold 380 million gallons of water. Under capital projects, we are increased, there's an increase there, and that is primarily because of the Sonoma Booster Pump Station pumping and electrical upgrade project that will cost probably approximately 4.2 million, depending on how the bids come in this summer. The biological opinion project is the Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Project. I'll talk about that a little bit more, but for miles 4, 5, and 6, design and construction costs are coming up in 1920 and will be ongoing for the next four years or so. And that accommodates for that, that accounts for that increase. And again, we have $7 million in bonds, grants, and fund balance to offset those expenses. There will be bonds for the Sonoma Booster Pump Station project as well, but those bonds also help offset some of the expenditures. Historical water deliveries, we like to show this because in 2008, we had, you know, almost 60 million acre feet in water deliveries, and it dropped 33% down to less than 40,000 acre feet, which is a significant drop primarily because of the economic downturn and mostly because of the drought. And you can see that in years where the red line is higher than the blue line, when actuals are higher than budget, we're able to keep money in fund balance and use that money when the red line falls below the blue line, when actuals fall below budget, we're able to use that fund balance to help smooth out the rate. And now, once again, we are increasing our deliveries in 1718 and 1819, and we're able to build fund balance to help offset costs for the next drought, and also to implement some of the deferred maintenance and capital projects, and keep our rate increase within the 4% to 6% range. The Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Project, I mentioned this earlier. Miles 1, 2, and 3 of Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement were paid for by Sonoma Water under a separate fund that is separate from the water transmission system. So the water contractors did not pay for miles 1, 2, and 3, but the water contractors will be paying for miles 4, 5, and 6. The estimated cost for over a six-year period, beginning last year and through this year and for the next four years, is about $20 million. We're cost-sharing it with the Army Corps, US Army Corps. Their Army Corps share is 65%, our share is 35%, and that, our share is the $20 million which will be spent over the next four to six years. We have $5 million in fund balance, which we will use to help smooth the costs out or smooth the rates out over those subsequent five years. Construction will begin in 2021. Because this is not considered a capital project, we're not able to get bond funding for it. We also cannot get grant funding for it because it is mitigated, it's mitigation, it's a mitigation project, and grants typically do not want to be granted for required mitigation projects. So we're really relying on the US Army Corps, their 65% cost share, and that keeps our costs down to the $20 million over the six-year period. There we go. So another capital project that you would be interested in is the Sonoma Booster Pump Station Electrical Upgrade and Pumping Reliability Project. Again, that will be occurring this summer. It will be awarded this summer. I guess they're going out to bid this spring, and we will have bond funding to help offset some of those costs. We will be providing redundant pumping and seismic improvements to the building and electrical improvements, and it should make a very big difference for the Sonoma Aqueduct, particularly in conditions, you know, in emergency circumstances. And so this project will be implemented, and the bond funding will cover it. Each year, the water contractors ask that we compare our rates to other wholesale water contractors, and it's really difficult to compare side by side, but we are happy to be on the far-left side of the scale there. The other water contractors that are wholesalers had to raise their rates significantly during the drought when we were able to keep ours in that 4% to 6% range. The only rate that we've been able to find that is lower than ours is the San Juan Water District, but two years ago, they had a 16% rate increase, and last year, they had a 9% rate increase, and this year, they have a 9% rate increase. So we feel pretty good about being able to stay within that 4% to 6% range. Again, the rate increase is 4.77% on the Sonoma Aqueduct. The rate is $1,048.80 per acre foot. And as I mentioned, on March 4th, the Technical Advisory Committee voted to approve the budget. We're presenting to all of the water districts and cities and towns during the month of March. The Water Advisory Committee will vote on Monday, April 8th, and it will be adopted by our board by April 30th. I believe our date is set right now at April 16th. The water, we were asking that Sonoma, the city council, make a recommendation to their WAC member regarding a vote on this, on the budget and rates. One of the items that is included in the WAC approval, or the Water Advisory Committee approval, will be the fact that we're planning to transfer some fund balance from the Water Management Subfund to the Recycled Water Local Supply Subfund because it's needed in the Recycled Water Subfund for a local recycled water Tier 2 program project that's being implemented by Marin Municipal. The transfer has no effect on the rates, and it does not increase the rate at all, and it's just more of an accounting transition, but it does require WAC approval. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Hundley?
One question, the pump station that's going to be getting some help, is that the station that we have issues with during the fires for losing power? Is it in Thornsbury?
No, the one we had issues with during the fire was a city pump station. This is a Sonoma Water pump station.
Where is this one located? Do you know?
It's located on Montgomery Drive. I think it's not too far south of Spring Lake, the Spring Lake area. Yeah.
Nice. Thank you.
But it will provide good reliability, sorry. It will provide electrical reliability and pumping reliability, so it will help improve circumstances during fires and other earthquakes.
Councilmember Agrimony?
Thank you. Ms. Roselli, I heard, this is very comprehensive, and my question is, I think, Earl, somewhere in this packet, I think projects, you were talking about 1 mile, 2 mile, 3 mile. Could you expand on that?
That's the Dry Creek Habitat Enhancement Project. So we are required, under the biological opinion, that NOAA, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Association Administration, thank you, requires us to provide mitigating factors in Dry Creek because the flows that are in Dry Creek are too rapid for fish habitat.
I'm sorry to just put that in context, you know, we, the water comes down this aqueduct to Sonoma, and we all have this great water that we distribute and use here in Sonoma. A lot of that water comes, you know, rains in the watershed, in the upper reaches of Dry Creek, and gets captured in Lake Sonoma. And so the reason we have this water throughout the summer is there are releases from Lake Sonoma that flow down Dry Creek, and by the name, you can see Dry Creek didn't normally have flow running year-round, so there's more water flowing through Dry Creek than would normally have been, so that it flows down Dry Creek into the Russian River, and we pull, the Sonoma Water pulls water from below the layers of gravel in the Russian River and then distributes it, you know, down to Petaluma, down to Marin County, down to Sonoma. And so the environmental agencies require that some mitigation be provided in Dry Creek because of the impacts of our water coming down Dry Creek.
So when you mentioned mile 1, is that our responsibility, or mile 2 is someone else's responsibility? I guess that's why.
So miles 1, 2, and 3 were the first half of the overall mitigation that's required in Dry Creek to slow down the water, and miles 1, 2, and 3 were paid for by Sonoma Water but out of a separate fund, so the water contractors didn't pay for any of it. Miles 4, 5, and 6 will be paid for by the water contractors, by all of the water contractors, so it's not just the Sonoma Aqueduct, it's all of the water contractors will be sharing that cost.
Okay, thank you so much.
I have a question for city staff. How do these rates compare to what we modeled in setting our own rates?
Yeah, so we always have to make projections when we set rates, so the projections that we built into our rates expected a 6% rate increase, so it's nice, this is less than what we had projected. If we had projected a lower rate than what Sonoma Water came back with, we would probably be contemplating increasing our rates because we did build that into our rates, so if the cost of buying water goes up more than we expected, then our rates would go up, and that was all covered within the Prop 218 notice and all that. But since it came in lower, we were able to keep our rates at the rate we set them, and then we set rates for three years, so we'll keep tracking this over the three years, and when we go into the next rate-setting process, kind of like what Ms. Roselli's talking about, having some money set aside for ups and downs is beneficial, and then it can help with our next water rate setting.
Yeah, I was just going to add on, so that if, as we look forward, if we end up with kind of this potential decrease in costs, and we're able to set that money aside, and because we also have a variety of capital projects, council may remember, we've made estimates, we don't, but if those, if those capital projects come in higher, so that's why at this point, we kind of, we, staff's recommendation is we leave the rates the way they are, we can continue to watch and monitor, and again, council only did three years, so that we can then kind of see what happens and then evaluate near 4 and 5.
But are we, this is a question for the city attorney.
Oh, she has a question. Please, the attorney.
That's what I thought you'd say. No. Aren't we required to only charge the actual cost of delivering the service, and if we know the actual cost and it is not what we projected, we don't have any obligation to set it at the actual cost?
My understanding is not, that's not true, that you look at a period of time for which you've set the rates, and perhaps next session, next year, these rates here will be highly higher, the rates that will be charged will be much higher than what you predicted. And so you can balance those out over a period of time. It can't be an unreasonable period of time. You can't set rates for 500 years and hope that you work it out for 500 years and just let it ride. Here, you've set a reasonable period of time to look back and do true-ups, and that's completely appropriate.
Okay, and then just, so these rates are only for 1920, then?
That's correct.
And do you do your rates every year?
We do.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
And I guess since we're on the subject, could Public Works just mention for a reminder for the council and public, what percentage of our water comes from Sonoma Water?
More than 80%.
So that other 20% is coming from wells? And do you know what the cost is?
I think the amount of water, it varies from year to year, but generally, it's around 12% of the water comes from the wells, and so 88% in some years has come from Sonoma Water, and I don't have a number of the costs right here, sorry.
So that difference in, in cost and knowing that this is going to be lower, would there be any talk at a staff level of decreasing the well use and using more of the Sonoma Water?
It's a great question. Our water rates are based on actually increasing the amount of well production from what it had been, so we might back off on that a little bit as it goes forward, but I think it's really important for us to continue to be good at supplying water through our wells so that we can be ready to supply water in dire emergencies if the aqueduct wasn't able to provide water to Sonoma.
Just the last question. So I'll be, I'm the WAC member, so I'll be there on April 8th to vote. Is the staff going to bring back that on the April 1st meeting?
We were not planning on it. Again, the council has made a decision in the past, when you have representatives that sit on regional bodies, you have empowered those regional bodies to provide and to vote based on their kind of knowledge, generally what the council's thinking, and their expertise that they gain sitting on those regional bodies. So we wouldn't typically bring it back. What we've said in the past, when we've talked about this as a council, is if an individual council member wants to have it placed on because they want specific feedback from the council fully before they make a decision, then we have done that.
I think what we could do now is not vote on it, but have just individual comments for your consideration. So, and I think, given the fact that these rates are lower than what we predicted, that they're more than acceptable, and I learned a lot from your presentation, so, anyone else?
I can, sorry to interrupt the council discussion, just one other thing, one other piece of information, Ms. Roselli mentioned the Ad Hoc Subcommittee that provided advice as far as rate-setting, and Chris Petlock from the Valley of the Moon Water District served on that. He's in finance at Valley of the Moon, and they also get water from the aqueduct, so I was happy that the valley was represented on that committee.
Thank you. Any other comments about, or Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I thought that was really good for layman terms so that we could understand it. Thank you.
Any other comments about this presentation? No? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, it's just our presentation. And next, we have item 3.2, which is recognition of our outgoing commissioners, committee members, and our city historian. City clerk, do you have anything to add to that?
Nothing.
No? Okay. So some people are here and some people are not. I'm going to call your name, and if you're here, please come up. From the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission, the first person we have is Kate Shirts. Kate, hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much for your service.
(applause).
Would you like to say a few words about serving?
No, it's just, it's been an honor and a privilege, and I hope you'll continue to support CFAC.
Thank you so much. Next, we have from the Community Services and Environment Commission, Jeff Van Houten. And would you like to say a few words?
No, it was really an honor and a pleasure, and I have to say, I just learned a lot serving on the commission, so I think I've benefited as much as anybody. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. We have some other commissioners, and I'm not sure if they are here or not. Linda Ransom served for 20 years on the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission. Mary Edlin and Troy Knox Alls were commissioners on the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission. On Design Review and Historic Preservation, there was Christopher Radiver. On the Planning Commission, Carol Jansen and Linda Carrato. On the Traffic Safety Committee, Paul Thomas. And our city historian, Robert Demmler. Thank you to all of them. And now, on to the Consent Calendar, item 4. All items listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, the council may decide to change the order of the agenda.
I just wanted to make a request that we pull 4.5.
Okay, and I would also like to pull item 4.2. Anyone else? I will take it out to the public for public comment on the I will take it out to the public for public comment on the consent calendar. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. Do we have a motion on the consent calendar excluding items 4.2 and 4.5?
I'm, I moved to approve the consent calendar excluding items 4.2 and 4.5.
I will second that. Can I make a brief comment about one of those?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that I've heard, you know, that our 4th of July parade is going to experience a slight change this coming year to add more frontage for people wanting to see. And some people are bothered by this change to a tradition that's been going on for a very long time. But I'm excited to be able to, more people to have a front row seat. And whoever got the hotel rooms for the Swiss Hotel for those, for that day scored big time because it's going to be amazing.
On that note, can we get a roll call? Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And can we, city manager, or who's covering 4.2? I know it says Associate Planner on here, I don't know.
It'll be David Store, our planning director, myself.
Oh, great. City staff?
Yeah, so I'll start and then our planning director start. So probably about a year ago, there was an opportunity to apply for a historic train district, kind of between kind of Depot Park and then on First Street West and East and those areas. There was a request from the Historical League and the Society for Historic Preservation. Both made those requests. Council asked that we put 50% of that in the budget for this current year, which we did, which was $7,500. And then we applied, our staff applied for a grant through a state agency. We were not successful in getting that grant. So we are coming back to council now to request the additional $7,500. The budget estimate was $15,000. So we're coming back to get the funding based on, so then we can move forward to the next kind of fiscal year. Looking at overall kind of priorities, this is definitely something the council has wanted to have done. And as I think as we look at our next year, there are a variety of things the planning commission, planning department, excuse me, has on their plate, from general plan and UGB, some big conversations that we're going to be starting. And also parking are some things council talked about. So at this point, what we want to do is get the funding, start this process. It may, it's going to get balanced with some of those other projects in terms of timing. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any council questions? I have some comments, but I'll make it after public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Councilmember Aggermonte?
Yes, thank you so much. Well, this afternoon, city manager Kathy Capriola and I discussed 4.5. And I, I'm not, I have no concerns about it, but caring about the issues of staff, I just wanted to know, we're extending this contract.
Oh, this is about the train district.
Oh.
Any comments on 4.2? No, that's okay. So I think it's great that this is on here, but with regard to the train district, my understanding is that preliminary map of what the district might be has been kind of drawn up internally by staff. And I think that this, what the district will be and what areas it'll cover is sort of maybe an iterative process. And it requires people to put, you know, to put as much thought as possible into what our district could look like and where it should be. When the guidelines for downtown, the historic guidelines were made, there was a group made up of a planning commissioner, design review and historic preservation commissioner, and the plant, and the planning director. And I think that would also be appropriate here. I would like that group to select the consultant and also do some work on what the map and kind of what the district would look like. So I do like this item, but I think that we would benefit from the engagement of our planning commission and our design review commission.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I have, you know, some concerns about what the map looks like as well. Is it just kind of in the Depot Park area? Is it expanding beyond that? I have concerns about increasing, you know, historic districts with regards to, you know, how that relates to Sequoia and all these other kinds of questions. So the way that the map is drawn is really important. Does that make sense?
Are there any other comments? So I, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.2 with the change that the, a subcommittee be formed of a member of the planning commission, the planning director, and a member of the design review commission, and that they be tasked with working on this matter, including selecting an appropriate consultant. That was a motion.
Thanks.
Second.
Can we get a roll call? Councilmember Aggermonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And now on to item 4.5.
Thank you. So this has been something that's been on my mind for many, many years.
Councilmember Aggermonte, I think we have to have staff presentation and public comment and then...
I didn't, I wasn't told that. Thanks.
Sorry, just a brief context for folks that are watching. So the item 4.5 is basically a one-year extension to the city's contract with Sonoma County Sheriff's Department for the provision of our law enforcement services. The city has had a contract with Sonoma County Sheriff for about 15, 15 years now. And so we have two councilmembers that have been assigned as an ad hoc to look at the future kind of longer contract. That's Mayor Harrington and Councilmember Cook. However, just kind of with a variety of times and projects, we needed additional time. City of Windsor has also extended for one year. They are the other contract cities, so we're kind of in alignment with them. So the recommendation in front of you is to extend the contract for a year. And then staff will be working with the subcommittee and the sheriff's department to have a further conversation, both about cost, service levels. And we're looking at having the police chief as part of kind of some budget prep for the council, come and do kind of an operations overview, some background, so that the full council gets some background as well before we kind of start some of this process. So happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the council? Seeing none, I'll take it out to the public if any member of the public wishes to comment on this item. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. And now councilmember comments. Councilmember Aggermonte.
Thank you. So for some time now, with respect to our, our sheriff's department slash police department, there, there's been one concern I've had, and I think Brett's, Brett and also Orlando have done a wonderful job in achieving these things with respect to outreach. I still would like to have it at a new, an increased level. What that means, I don't know. I leave that up to the mayor and councilmember Cook to find out what that might mean for the next year. The other issue for me is if you're going to delay this contract, what does that do to the rate of pay that people have? Is that, does that mean you delay the contract for, for their services? And if that doesn't mean that, then we wait that year? And is that retroactive back to that, this date, to another date? So those are just the questions I have.
So I'll be happy to answer the budget question first and then let Chief Rodriguez maybe if, to speak briefly about some of the outreach that's occurring currently. So in, the way the contract works is typically there's been a, there was initially a five-year contract, and then there was a 10-year contract with, and that's kind of now at the end of that 10 years. So the contract basically says that we will have these services. And then there is a service plan that's put together every year that outlines kind of the operations and the detail. And then there is the budget itself, which we bring to council and review. So a lot of, the one, the question I believe you're asking, Councilmember Aggermonte, is the question of employee compensation? So, you know, again, these are not our employees. And a lot of times, sometimes the budget is set, and the budget year may have even been started before maybe the sheriff's department is done in their negotiation process. These things don't always align. They don't always align for cities. And again, a budget is a plan, so you make a budget and maybe you assume a 2% increase or maybe you assume a 3% increase. Last year's budget with the sheriff's department was that we, we didn't know what was going to happen. It was coming out of the fires. And we actually assumed no increase because we didn't even have any sense in there. And then I think in some point in July, after the budget was passed, they put in just a basic 2% one-time compensation adjustment, not ongoing COLA at one time. And there was some additional funding for healthcare. So then that means our budget goes up by those costs because we're paying for those employees. So that's basically, you know, our contract is adjusted by those amounts and ends up kind of basically being a mid-year budget adjustment. So it would be the same thing this year. And again, there in contract negotiations currently, we are looking probably at putting some baseline in the budget this year. So we don't have kind of any, we have less of a gap if they're assuming that there will be some kind of a multi-year agreement potentially this next year. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does, and I think we discussed it today. But I just wanted this council to hear and also our attendees here this evening that this involves labor as well. So I think that's very important for us to understand that. And I don't know how this all shakes out. It's just important, I think, that we have to remember these people are, serve the people of Sonoma, and we need to be able to recognize. Because with contracts, you know, they're, they extend by months. And I think it's just really important that we remember that when we're all working on that. So I appreciate the mayor and David Cook looking at this.
Okay. And Chief Rodriguez, I'm sorry, do you want to, the other question on outreach? I'm sorry, do you want to go?
It's sort of on the same topic as councilmember Aggermonte. So on item 6A of the contract here, it says, "Before March 1 of each year, the county shall prepare and submit to city a proposed service plan and related cost estimate." So have we received that? Cost estimate?
We have received an initial budget, and we've got some questions, we're going back and forth with them on. And so that's underway. And then, sorry, go ahead.
What is the percent increase on the cost estimate that they have provided? Or what is the increase?
I don't have that number, I apologize, in my, with me at this time. I think it was, I want to say it was below 3%. I want to say 2.4, something like that.
Maybe the chief knows.
I don't.
Oh, okay. So I think that's really relevant, what the actual cost, estimated cost increase with regard to increasing the contract, agreeing to the contract forward going. It's a relevant piece of information for this evening.
Okay. Well, I think the piece here, again, for council to remember is this, the actual budget is something and the service levels that you can adjust as we go through that budget process. The decision you're making here is that you are making a decision to continue to contract with the sheriff's department. And if you decide to, in the future, to not contract, you, there is about, there's a year timeline that has to be given to the sheriff's contract. And if that would be a decision the council would look at, honestly, you would need to do kind of a multi-year because hiring your own department, going through all those pieces is a much more elongated timeline.
I don't think that, that's not the question I was asking.
Okay.
Just with regard to already having an estimate of how much the additional cost will be next year in renewing the contract for a year, I think they are, it's helpful information. So if that can be provided, that'd be great.
Yeah, we can, we can send that out to council separately.
So, and thank you, Madam Mayor. That's why I brought it up, because I think you and also councilmember Cook, just be cognizant of that. That's, you know, that's what I'm thinking of.
Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city councilmembers, and members of the public. You asked about outreach. So today I ran the stats right before I got here. And from the day I took office in July to now, we've done about almost 500 community outreaches. So that includes the high schools, all the schools within Sonoma and also the valley. And when we go to, when we go to these schools, we're pretty much interacting with, with the kids and the staff, reading books, playing basketball, mentoring and tutoring. I believe the school's a hope. I think our K-9 deputy Sherman does that, and he enjoys it. We also attend the football games, we do the parades, of course. And then we do some presentations, distracted driving, K-9 presentation, and then career day presentations at the schools. And that includes all the schools. You know, we're kind of a big district out here, and so we go there. We also, what I did is what I assign one of our CSOs is to go to the square and contact all the, the managers and the owners so we can update their names and phone numbers in case there is some type of an emergency at night. And he did that, it took him about a couple of weeks, and he met everybody, and they really liked that they, he went out there and was meeting everybody. So soon as, you know, the weather's better, so you could expect to see more deputies probably also walking the square and just saying hi to people. We've also assisted in the homeless count, and we also assist in the Sonoma overnight support when we deal with the homeless people out in the streets, especially during this weather that we had. You know, we had, unfortunately, you know, our prayers go out to, to the families of the terrorist attacks that happened in New Zealand. And, and because of that, the prior, the one we had prior, or last year, I was invited to go to the, the Congressional of Sheir Shalom's synagogue to make a presentation and just do a candle vigil. So I went to that. And from that, I ended up going to the meeting, which was, I was invited to, to the Sonoma Valley Interface Ministerial Association. And we really began a good dialogue where our deputies got involved and they started going to some of the churches and providing input, safety inputs, things like that. So we did that outreach. We also go to, we do some foot patrols, obviously, at night at the bars. And we've been to the Maxwell Shopping Center, and we meet people and talk to them. And most recently, we did coffee with a cop. We did have a good turnout. And one of the requests that they asked is that we do more of them. So they want us out there, they want to see us, and it's evident at that. We went to, excuse the language, but it was, that's what it's called, the Seventh Annual All-American Badass Car Show here at the Veterans. And we did an outreach there. So, you know, we showed our colors and just said hi to people. And again, we're out there doing that outreach. Right now, what we're working on is the Citizens Academy, pushing that to all our citizens. Taylor's working on that, she's already got the outline, she's already got the classes set up and the times and dates. We're going to start probably July 10th and go through August 7th, one day a week, every Wednesday, from 6:00 to 9:00. And there, you have to be at least 18 years old or older. And you're going to learn about our dispatch communication, our patrol procedures, what we do, crime prevention, criminal law, police ethics, and also our correction system. And you'll get to do a tour of the, of the jail, do a tour of our police department, and do a tour of the sheriff's office. And you'll get to see a lot of the, a lot of the things that we have, you know, the services that we provide. And it kind of gives an idea to the public of, you know, what you have when something happens. You know, when there's an emergency, this is what's going to happen, this is who's going to respond. And it kind of gives everybody an idea. So those are the outreaches we've been doing, and we're still working on doing more community outreach. You know, when I first got here, I was invited to a community meeting regardless, you know, people dumping their garbage under bridges and things like that. So we went out there, and we got a lot of help cleaning those, under those bridges and, and kind of keep going and doing that community outreach. So I hope that kind of explains that, you know, what we've been doing besides everything else that we do. So.
Well, I just really appreciate the time that you, you know, given us, because I think it's important for everyone to hear that. And I think it's, you know, it's different. You know, they always say, you come at the worst time for a family, but, you know, it's not necessarily that way. And I really appreciate the effort you've taken, Chief Rodriguez.
Thank you. And again, I welcome the public. If there's any other issues that we can help, go to a community meeting, please out, give us a call, and we'll definitely be there. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments?
I have one additional comment, and I appreciate all the work you're doing. But over the next year, some things I really do want to look into, so with regard to, and I'm happy to be corrected if this is inaccurate, but with regard to the salary of the chief, I know that you do work for the valley as well as for the city. And I think the city is paying something like 90% of the chief's salary, 80%, something like that.
80%.
80%. So it's 80/20. So I'd like to be clear about whether the time is really 80/20, valley, city, and have a understanding of how that works. I had some other questions after the last presentation with regard to our city being staffed with two and the valley being staffed with two deputies, about whether that meant that if there was a call in the valley and the valley was understaffed, if that meant that ours, our deputies were going there. I presume they would, sort of meaning that our staff levels are underwriting the valley. So I have, I have questions about, not to be answered at this moment, but over the next year in the contract negotiations forward going, to figure out... year in the contract negotiations forward going, to figure out what is the actual data about how often our deputies are in town versus in the Valley, and then whether or not we are kind of subsidizing what's happening in the Valley with our tax dollars. So I do appreciate all the work you're doing, but I also have a number of questions forward going about some details of it.
And I hope, I hope there wasn't a confusion on staffing levels. The Valley staff, it's always staffed with, actually, they have 12 deputies, so they're always staffed with two deputies 24 hours. We, like I said, we're staffed with two deputies 24 hours. The thing is that we, we only have 10 deputies, so we have to stagger them as they go. So that's the only thing, but we're always here with two deputies. And like the other day, we had that vandalism call where there was, you know, seven victims, seven cars being smashed, and six suspects. The Valley deputies came in here and helped us with that call. And if it would have, if it wouldn't have been for them, I think I, we would have had to call in day shift early, we would have had to call in more resources, because it's hard to interview six suspects, call parents, and then get all the victim information. And that pretty much would have shut them down for the rest of the night. So there is a lot of, you know, that they back each other up, but definitely, I think when it comes to something happening at Sonoma, the Valley deputies do come over here and help us out, and vice versa.
Of course.
And one of the things that helps is when we do make an arrest, regardless if it's the Valley or Sonoma here, we meet them at, at Juvenile Hall, where we do a transfer, and they transport all the way to the jail.
So what I'm talking about is not a question of whether mutual assistance is positive, which it absolutely is. The question is, with regard to the number of calls, whether there's more times that our deputies are going to the Valley, or more times that they're coming here, or whether it's even, is not data that we have currently. And over the next year, it's information that I'd like to receive. It's clearly critical to have the support, and that's one of the good things about the sheriff's contract, but if there is more crime happening in the Valley, it's larger, so presumptively, just given that there's 40,000 people there and 10,000 people here, one would assume there are more incidents there. I don't know if that's true or not, but it seems logical. Then presumptively, our deputies are going to the Valley more frequently than we are receiving help, but we are paying the full cost. And so the question is, are we underwriting the Valley, the county to some extent, with our officers? That isn't a question that can be answered today, but it's data that we need to receive when considering the contract, for sure.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, this is a question that I had asked when we did the, the previous kind of review, overview of what's going on with the sheriff's department, and I, I have to admit it, that meaning I was a little bit confused, it kind of sounded like we did have them separated, that there were always two here regardless. It makes more sense that there's flow between the two, but I think it's absolutely crucial that we do have the data, that we do know what, what the service levels are, where the deputies are at any given time. And I think we should absolutely share deputies, but maybe it makes, the cost sharing needs to become part of that as well.
Councilmember Cook?
And I appreciate the mayor's comments, and I agree with them. I think it was very responsible for the ad hoc committee and staff recommendation to hold off for a year because of the staff load, because all these questions are questions that we really want to dig into, you know, this contract that we have. So we, tonight, we're voting for the one-year extension, which I think is very responsible.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, do we have a, oh, do we have a comment or a motion? Oh, do we have a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a comment and then a motion. I, I just do want to say that, you know, the sheriff's contract, the contract that we have with the sheriffs and the broader sheriff's offices, it provides a lot of resources to Sonoma, provides a lot of benefit to Sonoma, and it's, it's really a great contract and a great partnership that we do have. And, and so I appreciate that we do have that. Obviously, there's always adjustments that we make with any contract to make sure that we're getting the appropriate deal, and I appreciate the, the ad hoc committee's attention to that. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve a one-year extension of our current contract with the sheriff's office.
Second.
Can we get a roll call? Pardon me? I was just wondering who was going to take the second. Madeline.
Give it to Madeline.
Councilmember Aggermani?
Hi.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move to item 6.1, no, sorry, 5.1, "A public hearing to discuss, consider, and take possible action to waive further reading introduced by title only and conduct a first reading of an ordinance to establish new zoning regulations for wine tasting facilities, wine bars, in specified zoning districts, and finding the action to be exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA guidelines 15061B3," city manager and planning and community services director.
Thank you, Mayor Harrington, members of the council. I'll just give us a few brief comments and then hand it off to David Stor, our planning director. So as council knows, looking at wine tasting facilities began in conversations in late 2017. There was a variety of outreach in 2018, and, and there were conversations with council in, in December or so. So we're now back to, and based on the current moratorium that sits in place, that moratorium deadline is May 1st, 2019. So the council needs to take action tonight on a first reading of an ordinance in order to make the timeline that we have in front of us with the current moratorium. As we go through tonight, if, once we get direction from council, if there's the need for staff to maybe draft anything or do any edits, and that we need, need to take a pause and then kind of do another item and then come back, I just want to lay that out, that that is a technique, and we're ready to, we've got things set up in the back conference room if we need to do that. So there are two ordinances that are in front of you. One is, I'll let staff, sorry, Mr. Stor will go through them, but there is a first kind of staff draft based on what we heard from council, and then there were some edits and comments and input provided by planning commission. So there's a separate ordinance that has their comments included. And so with that, I will turn it to David Stor.
Thank you. Tonight, we have, as Kathy said, two attachments for you, number one and two. The first is a draft that we composed and crafted, presented to the planning commission based on your direction from council on the 14th of January of this year. And there are several components, I won't go through every one of them, but in essence, the, the draft included the direction of the council to require a form of a use permit. We're calling it a WTUP, a wine tasting use permit. And that was included in both provisions of both attachments, the ordinance that we not only sent to the planning commission, presented to the planning commission, but also modified from the planning commission. So that component is consistent about, through both attachments. With respect to the geography, which the, the council, you know, had some discussion about, the draft that we presented to the planning commission included requirements of WTUP in the downtown district. And we also proposed a, a limit within the downtown district of 30. The other component that we had was that the, the WTP, WTUP, excuse me, sounds like a radio station, basically had a geography of, a limit of one wine tasting use permit facing the block, the plaza, on block faces. The ordinance that was presented to the planning commission was basically a staff's interpretation of your council direction. It also included, if you recall, the discussion that we had regarding non-conforming uses for existing uses in an abandonment period. It also included a period of time that new WTUPs would have before they became non-conforming or abandoned, that period of time being the 60 days. At the planning commission, their hearing, the planning commission had a couple of recommendations to pass, actually, three. The first one was that the, rather than having a WTUP only within the downtown district, that that WTUP would be citywide. And so it also made a recommendation to your council, which is in attachment number two, and we've called it the prod number limit citywide. They thought it would be best if the limitation occurred only to, of a number would be assigned to just the prod, and that would be 25 in total. You can see that we currently have 29 within the prod.
Can I, just quickly for the public, can you just define the terms WTUP and prod, in case anyone doesn't know what those are?
Yeah, I apologize, there's a lot of acronyms here tonight. So a wine, we typically have in the city principally permitted uses, conditional uses or use permits. And in this particular case, we're creating a new use permit, and the vernacular just relates only to wine tasting, the WTUP is a wine tasting use permit. The prod is a, a district, if you will, similar to what we were talking about just a few moments ago, about a train district. We have the historical overlay district. The, we currently have what's called the Plaza Retail Overlay District, which is generally around, and I actually do have that, we can pull it up maybe later on, I can probably get that on there, so you can see the geography of where the 29, excuse me, the 30 or the 25, different types of wine tasting facilities are within the city.
Thank you.
We also have in your staff report a diagram that shows the, the block faces and the corners, if you will, and we actually don't have that as an exhibit, but I can pull it up later on when we get through some discussion. So going back to the, to the geography, again, they, again, the planning commission recommended that the prod be that area of a limit, but they took it from 29 to 25, a greater number, if you will, concentrated in one area. And that's where we have most of our wine tasting facilities in the city right now. We actually have two that are actually outside of the downtown district. We can, again, show that map. Actually, I believe that's an attachment in your staff report too, at the very back. Again, the planning commission did concur with the recommendation with respect to the non-conformity periods as far as abandonment and the like for existing uses. So basically, in a nutshell, all of the existing wine tasting facilities with a passage of this ordinance will become non-conforming, and they'll have an ability to come in and receive a wine tasting use permit that will count against that 30 or 25, depending on the direction of the city council. With respect to wine bars, a wine, wine tasting use permit would be required in the downtown district and throughout the city elsewhere, a regular use permit will be required. Same with taprooms, they will continue to be requiring a use permit citywide in both the two versions of the attachments that we've provided for you.
David, before you leave that, can you describe the difference for council and community of the difference between a wine tasting facility, a wine bar, and a taproom?
Yeah. The, so a wine tasting facility, you may recall through our previous conversations, a wine tasting would be a 02 ABC license, which is just one winery advertising its wines and tasting its wines for the public. A, a wine bar is a type 42 license where it will have multiple winery wines, does that sound right? Yeah. It'll have multiple wines from the vintners. A taproom would be alcoholic beverages and beers and that kind of thing that you currently have. And those are required, those do require use permits throughout the city in our existing code. We also have provided to you redline versions where we've made some minor changes in response to some comments from the public, in addition to providing you with a new exhibit, a, for the downtown district version as well, and I think Rebecca handed those out previously. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Are there any council questions? Councilmember Hunley?
So I'm skipping ahead, I'm looking at your charts of the, you know, marking like which ones are plaza facing and that sort of thing. In the numbers and the ordinances are, is the wine bars included in that number, or are they just regulated separately?
Would this be the diagram that you're looking at?
Yeah, that one. So I'm just looking at the ones that are marked red. So the ones that are facing the plaza?
Yeah.
Is, is the ordinance written so that the limit would include wine bars?
Yes, yes, it's got both. The, the O2s, if you look down the column to the far left, you'll see that those are all type 2 licenses, and then those are inside the prod, and then we also have the type 42s in the next column at the very top, where you see 27, 28, 29. And those are the ones with type 2s and 42s.
Yeah, maybe I'm just forgetting, I don't remember, it's talking about wine bars and as part of the number, number limits and things. But I guess we'll talk about it.
And, and again, you may recall that the moratorium was only dealing with type 2 licenses in the prod.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
So then, on that note, question for your city attorney. What is, I mean, really the fundamental, what would stop a, a regular wine tasting room or a, a single winery from opening under a 42 license?
Just the license. So part of the reason why staff combined the limitations and the requirement for a WTUP and the numerical limitations to extend beyond just a wine tasting facility into a wine bar would be without any thing other than changing their permit type, someone could get around the numerical limitations by just applying to, to change their license type and pouring two wineries' wines instead of one. So staff felt that in order to address that question, it was appropriate to include the wine bars in the definition and subject to the numerical limitations. I think the other thing to remember is the wine bar currently today has to have a conditional use permit anyway. They are only conditionally permitted uses, so it isn't really adding a layer of regulation to those facilities, with the exception of the numerical limitation.
So if we were to allow, I just want, just asking again for clarification, if we were to allow type 42s to go without a numerical limit, could any tasting room without really fundamentally changing their operations just apply for a 42 limit, or 42 permit? Or would they be able to get away, would they not be able to get away with pouring only their wines?
That's a very good question. I'd have to look at, for a minute, at the definition. Right now, the definition is tied to the license type, so, or primarily tied to the license type, so that when I say the definition, I mean the definition in the zoning code of what it is. Is it a wine tasting facility, or is it a wine bar? Right now, historically, and we've left it that way, those two different things are tied to which type of permit they hold. So if we leave it tied to which type of permit they hold, then yes, by getting the other type of permit, they wouldn't be subject to the numerical limitations or the wine tasting use permit. They would still require a regular, I'll call it regular use permit, in order to operate.
And then I have a question about the numerical limit. So it looks like in the planning commission's past, or their, their proposal, there'd be no limit in the downtown district, so any number could open up. With the prod, just for clarification, is, it's just kind of a tighter version of downtown, the, the downtown district, a lot of people would still consider a lot of those locations the plaza. So basically, it would allow for unfettered, or it would have to go through a use permit, but there would be no, no numerical limit on anything in the downtown district?
Yeah, that's correct. And as you look at the map that we have attached, you can see the cluster of those in the downtown district happens to be so close in proximity to the prod.
Right.
And I think that was the concern the commission had.
Right.
I have some questions about the notice required when the use is discontinued. So first, are we required to put landlords on notice that, that this is a new requirement if this ordinance passes?
Required, no, because the public hearing notice and your adoption and inclusion of the ordinance within the municipal code is sufficient to put them on notice. However, we've talked about doing an inventory and a notification relative to the existing businesses and sending out to them a set of the rules, so that, again, a landlord who currently has a business in their location knows what their new obligations are, and also so that relative to the city, we have a list of what the non-conforming uses are and what their operational aspects are right now, so that if they later try to expand, et cetera, or do any other activity that is in, I'll call it in violation or contrary to the ordinance, we would know what that was, because we had a, now an inventory of those uses. So obligation, no, intent, yes.
Okay. And then my next question about that is, oftentimes when I'm looking at a code, I think it's helpful to have the form of the notice contained in the code, and this, I think would be better, I mean, I would imagine that this will be somewhat, it could be contentious about whether or not the person gave notice, or whether or not this notice is too vague. So I think that in terms of actually acting on the 60-day notice, it's really important what this provision says. And so I'm just wondering, so right now it says, "Shall notify the city planner in writing of the date that the use of any site or structure ceased," but it, it's a little bit broad, and I would imagine that if it was like, it has to be delivered to the city clerk by X days, I mean, what are, is that upon applying for a new use permit? I mean, what are, is that upon applying for a new use permit? When does that have to happen? What if I just let the use go? Do I have to notify the city?
Yes. Under the way it's written, that's the intent. And certainly, we can add some parameters to that in terms of number of days and what notification means and to whom.
I think it would be better if it was delivered to the city clerk, addressed to the city planner, or whoever is the appropriate person, city planner's fine. And then there should be a form with the specific language that should be included for convenience of creating the notice. I don't think it's fair to make each person create their own notice, unless you had something else in mind about what the notice would say.
No, that's fine. And I think one of the things that we can do is say in the ordinance itself on a form provided, prescribed by the city, and then we can later administratively make the form available so that we don't have to try to craft the form this evening.
I think that's better. Okay. Thanks. Any other questions? Vice Mayor Harvey?
Under either of these, either of these ordinances, would there be anything that an existing tasting room would have to do to come under the new law? Or are they able to, they become a legal nonconforming use and they continue into perpetuity with no risk of their business kind of situation? Is there anything they're required to do?
Yeah. So the answer's no, but I think what happens is, as with most nonconforming statutes, you try to get those nonconformities to diminish over time. So I think there'll be an incentive for them to come get one of these WTUPs so they don't have to run the risk of then having a nonconforming use and then having the 60 days expire, they'd be able to then run with the land. So you'd have that ability.
But they can't.
But they can't, right? Because there's a numerical limit on how many of those are going to issue. So what I'm asking is specifically, there is no case that we're passing that we may pass under these current ordinances that would shut down an existing tasting room.
Correct.
Okay. And then, and they would not have to do anything to get those protections?
Correct.
So there's no required reason for any of these tasting rooms to go in and file any permitting or anything like that, the ones that exist now today?
Correct.
And they're not at any risk of being shut down?
Correct.
Cool.
Are there any other council questions? Councilmember Hunley?
Remind me, can a type 42 license do tasting?
I believe O2s and 42s both can do tasting.
Okay. So they can give it away for free?
I think we probably have members of the audience that can answer that question.
I'm just wondering, because Logan's question's about how an O2 would convert to a 42 and what that would entail, but I just would like to know what the differences are.
Somebody has food. Which one, is 42, it has?
No, that'd be a 46 or a 47, I think it is. There's different numbers. The O2 and the 42, the only difference being a singular winery versus multiple winery.
Well, that's our difference. I don't know what, I must admit, I don't know what the licensing difference is relative to whether or not you have to charge for the tasting. But I guess I would say you could charge a nominal fee to taste and be, many wineries do charge a nominal fee for tasting. But we'll look at that up while, and I'm sure a member of the audience has that information, but we'll also look it up.
Any other questions? No? Seeing no more council questions, we'll take it out to the public for public comment.
Good evening, City Council and staff. Fred Alabach, 19550, 8th Street East. I was involved in the tasting room discussions right from the very beginning as a member of the public. And at the initial planning commission and city council meeting, there was kind of a tension between the people who wanted to just let the market take care of it and people who wanted more regulation. And so at that time, I believe there was 13 tasting rooms. And so just for a little background on the let the market take care of it, in Milton Friedman's theory of capitalism, business's responsibility, only responsibility is to make a profit. And it's government's responsibility to address social goods and values. So if you just let the market take care of it, then you have no social values or social goods addressed, only profit. And so I think that it's good that the city decided to have the moratorium because that's government exercising the legitimate backstop to the market to provide social goods and values to the economy. So the moratorium finally happened, and so in that time, it went from 13 to 34 tasting rooms or wine facilities. And so I'm looking at the two different proposals of staff and the planning commission, and I personally would back the planning commission's version because that would result in 12, 25 tasting rooms would be 12 more, which would basically be 100% gross, growth in the tasting rooms over a period of three years. So 100% growth is pretty good to go with 25. And so I think it's good that the city is looking to regulate this because it's not really adaptive to have all your eggs in one basket. The whole tourism thing is centered on wine, and this is a good wine region. This is where you grow premium grapes in a Mediterranean-type climate. But nevertheless, in evolution, if something is over-adapted, then if something happens, you have no flexibility. So it's good that government here is providing some limits and incentive to do something else. So if something happens to the grapes, there's something else to fall back on.
Thank you.
David Eichar, E-I-C-H-A-R. There are two exhibites for citywide out in the lobby, one with multiple copies and one in the book, and they're different. So I'm not sure which one is right, but if the one that's a handout, it looks like there's a problem in that it doesn't have the wine tasting WTUP for the wine tasting and wine bars and doesn't have the UP for the taprooms. So you need to make sure you get the table 2.2 and 2.3 correct for whatever you choose. So I'm for the WTUP citywide rather than just in the downtown district. I think that provides more opportunity for the city to take a look at what is actually being proposed out there, and that'll be good. I also propose the downtown area, not just the prod. I think wider is better. It's easier to reduce an area in the future than to try to increase the area later. And so I'm not sure why there was not a majority interest in the city council in the new tasting rooms having some sort of local grape growing or wine-making restrictions. Doesn't really make much difference to me if the tasting room is serving wines from Sonoma Valley or Livermore Valley, but I think it does to the wine makers and grape growers here. And so I'm a little disappointed that two suggestions for possibly doing that seem to have been ignored, but oh, well. So I do applaud you looking at this now. I think we waited a while, years back, and we see that the number of tasting rooms has proliferated. So I'm glad that you're taking a look at it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Harrington, Vice Mayor Harvey, and esteemed members of the city council, my name is Adriana Duckworth, and I'm with the Sonoma Valley Vintners and Growers Alliance. Since the first grapes were planted in 1812, the wine industry has been a partner in the economic and social progress of the city of Sonoma and greater Sonoma County. Our membership body believes there is more common ground in our priorities than the proponents of the moratorium admit, and we appreciate discussing these ideas and finding solutions that improve the entire community. The wine industry recognizes there are challenges, but a handful of vocal residents are not a reason to regulate and marginalize our industry. We provide good-paying jobs. On average, tasting rooms pay more than $20 an hour to their employees. Over 425 wineries create 54,000 high-quality jobs that cover a spectrum of trades and specialties in Sonoma County. We are not only hiring tasting room staff, we are providing good jobs for the local economy. 65% of the jobs in Sonoma Valley are related to the wine industry. Our industry is the backbone of our local economy. More than $90 million in taxes were collected from winery businesses in the Sonoma Valley in 2018 alone. These dollars help pave roads, provide safety and winery, and additional funding for local schools, infrastructure, and new city programs. Our industry is symbiotic with other businesses. More than 30% of the city of Sonoma's revenues come from TOT taxes. Further, $1.25 billion in wine-related tourism provides funding for the county to solve impact problems, and an additional $13.4 billion in local economic revenue provides the county a path to starting new programs. These county dollars become citywide revenue. An additional $30 million in funds are provided over 100 local charitable causes. Specifically, our wine community helped raise $540,000 for Sonoma Valley education by sponsoring facets of the 2018 Red and White Ball, to just name one. Our industry wants to continue to work with city on issues like traffic, parking, and other impacts of tourism. This requires the city to look holistically at the plaza's business landscape rather than singling out a longtime partner that is important to the future of the city's success. The members of the Sonoma Valley Vintners and Growers Alliance look forward to a bright future where we can nurture new ideas that protect, preserve, and enhance our agricultural heritage in wine-making Leslie. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Leslie John, 824 Second Street West, General Manager of Panglass Cellars. Thank you, guys, for all the work you've put in so far to this. It's a very complicated issue. And I just wanted to bring up that in all of this process, talking about regulating tasting rooms and that the public does not want tasting room after tasting room after tasting room on the plaza, which I agree, I don't want that either. There's been nothing done or no ownership taken by the city or economic development of what's going to bring retail to Sonoma. Responsible retail. You know, the pharmacy coming back and the general store is just simply not going to happen. This is the world of Amazon, and I think that, respectfully disagree.
I'm going to ask members of the public not to make comments while other people are speaking. Thanks.
And, you know, I've walked the plaza, and the number of businesses that are subscription or that sell their goods online is a very low percentage. So I think that on the backside of this, that we should all look at solutions to bringing retail that is sustainable in this town to the plaza. A couple other points. When you asked the planning commission to make a recommendation, that was within the prod, and now they've recommended regulating citywide. And so I would ask you to do what you were asked to do and regulate on the plaza. Further regulation outside, that's not what initially we were asked to do. I agree with Adriana, and thank you for your, the letter and the vintners and growers. And the only other thing that I would encourage is, there's a lot of technical information in this package, and please make sure that everyone fully understands what you're voting on. It's a big responsibility, and if we have to slow things down, I know we're on a timeline, but it's a lot of the type 42 and the type O2, not that much difference, but we have to understand before votes are taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Conlon, 18850 Robinson Road. Let me just say, I reject the characterization that a small number of residents are trying to marginalize the wine industry in town. I don't think that captures the spirit of cooperation that many of the members of public have put time into this issue over the last two years. I've been frankly disappointed that we haven't had more substantive proposals from the vintners and growers about things that would be actually helping us restore the balance that used to exist here in Sonoma before this recent increase in wine tasting facilities. So with that preamble, I just want to hearken back to my comments at the planning commission recently, where I was struck by how the analysis that's gone into this project, this process before, has shown that there's a tension between the property owners, the real estate interests, and the businesses that rent those properties, and that if we're not careful, we may have unintended consequences. We may drive out some of the businesses we in fact want to support. And I'm surprised I haven't heard anything like, about that tonight in the staff's report. I didn't see much about sourcing in the, in the staff report. It does appear to be working in some other communities, that there are some limitations on the wine that can be sold in those areas. And so I hope you would consider bringing that back in your discussion tonight. My reason for bringing it back in is that I love some of the vineyards, some of the growers and vintners in this region, and I would like to see them take advantage of the limited availability of retail space here in our iconic plaza. So those are, those are the issues that I've been participating in this for. I would really love to see us restore the balance so that those of us in the community can feel wholehearted in our endorsement of our local tourism activities and not feel like, oh, my God, there's another one popping up. I do think it's important to use the planning commission's due deliberance and limited to 25. My understanding is that they were very concerned about spill over into the rest of the city, but that's what the use permit requirement would allow them to control for, is that you'd have to go for, go before, and they would look at those spill over effects on a case-by-case basis going forward. So those are my comments. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this topic? No?
Mayor, council staff, August Sebastianni, 516, 3rd Street East. I wasn't sure if I was going to talk, but I, and I'm not going to talk very much, other than to ask a couple of questions that are out there, and then I'll obviously sit down and hopefully get them answered. But the principal question I had is, what happens down the road when through attrition we go from, you know, whatever number we settle on tonight, assuming you settle on a number tonight, it's a limit of 30, and that, you know, the tasting rooms and wine rooms go down to 28, right? You have now two permits that are available and up for grabs. What happens when there's 15 wineries or 15 retailers in line for those two spots? Again, just a question I posed that I, I'm late to the party and I apologize, so I don't know if that was addressed 20 months ago or whatever it was, but it's a question that I think is relevant, obviously, for tonight. The other question I have was, Mr. Store mentioned that the moratorium was only for type O2 licenses within the prod you mentioned tonight. And we've been told by city staff at a number of occasions that for, for the firehouse at 32 Patton Street, that we are beyond the prod, but that we were not able to apply for an O2 license because of the moratorium. So there's a little bit of a disconnect there and a misunderstanding on our end. We are not currently O2 holders. We've applied for the O2 license. We applied back in December and were placed on hold because of the federal government shutdown. And so we actually were kind of waiting to have that permit in place before really getting our feet wet here. But now that the conversation has expanded beyond the plaza specifically and applying potentially citywide or beyond with the downtown district, obviously, selfishly, I'm a little bit interested in where this conversation goes, but would like to have some clarification from the city as to whether or not this moratorium that currently exists is solely for the prod or citywide, because that's not immaterial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Hi, Stephanie Hiller, 516, 7th Street West. I wasn't planning to talk on this topic, but since I spoke out of turn, I just want to say something in favor of the council, keeping in mind the value of local economies and considering which things are actually produced here and not run by large corporations, but reflect the values of the town itself. And there are cities, the one that I happen to have read about, where they are really focusing on local economies and local businesses and where they are flourishing because of that. And the main reason is that if you have a lot of local business, then the money that you spend at a local business circulates within the community. So if I go to a local, you know, produce store and I buy produce, then they, they will spend some of that money in town because they are growing their produce here and they live here. And that creates a different kind of community and a different kind of economy. And there's been a lot of research into it and a lot of organizations moving forward. And I would just really urge this council to keep that in mind as a possible guiding principle for how business in general... principle for how business in general is guided by the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close a public comment and bring it back to the council for comments. Who would like to start? Councilmember Hunley.
I'll go first, but I would like to know the answer to Mr. Sebastianni's question about imagining what it would look like the day that a permit was available. And like, are people, there's going to be a waitlist that people are on, or they just have to hit it the right day when the permit came open, show up at City Hall that day?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not quite sure how that's going to work, but it'd probably be first come, first served. I think that's the whole purpose of having the inventory, so we can communicate that it's going to be an evolving process as we see what it gets from 29, from 30 to 29 or 24 from 25. We'll have that rolling count, and people will be contacted, I'm sure, to check on us to see if things have changed over time. But ostensibly, if we receive 10 applications in one day, I think we'll just have to come up with a process to figure out how to deal with that if we get 10 applications.
Do we know what other cities do?
I've not come across it before, to be honest with you. Not getting that many applications for the same one permit in one day.
Well, I think that it's probably safe to say if we did move forward this morning that we'd have a little bit of time to figure it out, but I would like to have a plan in place if it's going to be, I mean, I could just see people wanting to be on a waitlist, and then that, I think waitlists are kind of weird, so I don't know if I'd want to go that route. But, so that would have to be something to be figured out, probably in the next year or so. But I appreciate the Planning Commission's discussion on this. I think that they actually made some improvements. Originally, I was leaning towards the downtown district, but, and only because there's parts of the prod that, or that around the prod that seem like it should be a part of it, but they're not. But I think for the purpose of this, which is all about the plaza, I like focusing on the plaza and then, you know, the Planning Commission's suggestion for the rest of the city, meaning it's possible, but we can, you know, take everything as a case-by-case and see if things start to cluster somewhere. So I'm, I'm leaning towards the Planning Commission's ordinance. And I can't decide how I feel about the lumping in the type 42 license. I can see the reason behind it, but that one I'd be willing to talk about. And also, I agree with people who have talked about this being just a tiny piece of an overall issue, which is what does a healthy downtown district look like? And I think that Sonoma has been very lucky over the many, many decades that the plaza has just been a very successful heart of our city, and we've taken it for granted, and we've never had to have a strategy. And I know there's been different efforts to, you know, kind of get the businesses together and have an advocacy group or, you know, the fact that we don't have like a, the Planning District Group, I find strange, but I think that it's really time to really think about what a healthy, diverse plaza looks like. And I think that there are things that the city can do. But the first step is Sonoma having not had an economic strategy for, I don't even know how long. We are in the midst of performing a economic study in preparation for a general plan, and I think this is going to bring us a lot of helpful information. And I've also talked to a lot of the retail store owners on the plaza who are getting pretty nervous about sort of the state of things. You know, they just want foot traffic on the plaza, and they prefer it be things that are, you know, year-round and have things in the winter that are going to attract locals there so that they will keep spending money to keep everybody alive over the winter. So I think that this is just a, just a little piece of a much bigger issue. And I know that for the last five years, this has been bubbling off. It seems like it's sort of only focused on tasting rooms, but that is just sort of like a symptom of the problem that has been not thinking about what our plaza is going to look like and what we can do to make it healthier. So I think we have lots of things we're going to do for that, and so I'm open to hearing my colleagues' comments on this, but that's where I'm leaning.
Councilmember Cook.
Yeah, I'd like to start out by saying that some of the things that the public said tonight was true, that we have overlooked a lot of things. And the number one thing that I think that we've overlooked is, when I mentioned a couple of meetings ago on this topic, that retail is dead. We all know it is. The winery business is right behind it. I tried to get those two to come together. My idea, and I still stand by that, is to use common sense. When you have an issue like this, you have people dying on the vines on one side, and on the other side, you have people go into those shops. So I thought that if you combine the two, instead of trying to regulate, because whenever the government tries to regulate, there's all these problems that happen. There's, there's going to be a lot of problems here, and people, you know, could lose, you know, lose everything they have because of it. If you could take a percentage of retail for any new winery that comes in, you grandfather in the ones that you have now and say, you know, if you want to come into Sonoma, you have to have, what, 50% of something else that's non-winery related? I think that was too much common sense for us to, you know, to move forward to that. Because what I'm afraid of is farm-to-table producers, and I know a lot of them. We all do. Anybody who has a neighbor in Sonoma County has a friend, a neighbor, who has farmed a table. What is farm-to-table? Farm-to-table is the individual that goes out, risks everything that they have in life to build a brand, and all they want to do is serve it to the public. That's when we're talking about O2 licenses and all this. But we want to regulate those. But you know what we're not saying? And I've sat here, and I hear people say it over and over about alcohol sales are so high in Sonoma. That's a true statement, because now we're not using common sense again. You can go to Burger & Vine, you can go to Mary's Pizza, you can go to EDK. You could make your round all the way around, and you probably won't find one wine in there that is farm-to-table, because they're big corporations. So I keep hearing this hypocrisy, and it's just because we're human and we don't understand, and a lot of it is the fear. I would like to see this go back to the ad hoc. I would like to be on that ad hoc, because I wasn't allowed to be on that ad hoc last time. I thought it made perfect sense to have somebody who at least knows more about the wine industry than the other colleagues, at least one, myself, and discuss this. Because what I'm talking about tonight could make or break Sonoma, and a lot of it is fear. If we do this wrong, there could be a lot of bad things happening. So I'll leave it at that, and I will be commenting a little bit after I hear my colleagues.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook, is there somebody who'd like to go next?
Well, I wasn't on the council at the time, but I've said this story, I can't tell you how many times. A very humble man got up and said, "I'm with a small winery. I have no way to make money, so I'd like to have a wine tasting room." It was so nice, and the council said, "That's a great idea. We like the idea." And so somebody said, "Well, we should, we should control the number of these wine tasting rooms around the plaza." Well, the council said, "No, no, the market will control it." Well, that never happened. It was like the, I think what would, I wrote it down, I used to watch cowboy movies, and it used to be, I think it was called the Kansas Land Rush for a while with, with the wine tasting rooms. I don't think there's, there's anything wrong with that, but I think what we missed many years ago was a limit, and then we could grow from that, not necessarily work it back. So I think that was a mistake. The other thing is, I have the letter here dated March 18th from the Sonoma Valley Vintners and Growers. And a couple of things they say, "Problems related to parking can be solved through a partnership with transportation agencies in order to bring tourists to our impacted areas." Yeah, that's what we should be doing. We're not doing, we haven't done that. We, the other, "We encourage the city to study how, how other municipalities have nurtured this." I heard that here, and they did mention something that I don't know how it would relate to Sonoma, and so I think that's something that we may have missed, unless I don't know that. You know, we may have missed looking at other cities. And Sonoma can similarly balance the benefits of tourism by creating, and it's an incentivization to, for businesses to balance new areas, meaning I guess that'd be retail. I have another letter here that says, "If the goal is to reduce the number, it would be better to limit the demand by requiring a criteria which would reduce those who qualify, since the Planning Commissioners were interested in finding a way of helping small local tasting room businesses. The obvious criteria would be requiring the business offer primarily local-produced products from businesses that have their operations in Sonoma Valley. This would, this would control demand, allow local businesses to have a presence on the plaza while at the same time reducing demand, which avoids the current imbalance of supply and demand and leads to higher rents." This is a person who has always been involved here in Sonoma. I think there's some good ideas, and I am remiss in thinking that maybe we did study other cities. I actually wanted this to be solved before the end of the year, so I compliment the mayor for pushing, pushing, getting this somewhere in 2019. Because I, I can't agree that nobody, that it's a small group that's complaining about this. You know, like others, we see a lot of people, and people feel, or maybe it's the perception, and perception is like the truth, that they feel there are too many wine tasting rooms. Whether that's true or not, I, I don't know. I'm not, I don't like these numbers that we're being given here, but, you know, I just think we may have missed something. I don't want to delay this any longer. It's so painful for these, these are businesses. But as I said, I was here that day, and, you know, people said you need to limit this. I think it would have been far greater for us to have a limit and to build from that than to take away and go down. So, thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Okay. Lots of things. So one, I mean, farm-to-table. The vast majority of the producers on the plaza that I know are small families, are small companies, are small businesses, are not connected to larger corporations. That's just a fact from what I know from the wine industry, and I can name them specifically. I know Hawke's Family, that farms their own property up in Alexander Valley. That's their tasting room there, it's run completely by the family. I know Pangloss Cellars is a family-owned business. I know that Highway 12 is a family-owned business. I know that Passagio Wines is a family-owned business. I know that Cayman is owned by Robert Cayman, and he has his own property here in Sonoma that's as farm-to-table as it gets. The Bump Family Cellars, a very small producer. Corner 103 is owned by Lloyd, that's an individual. Rancho Maria, all of them are small family businesses. So we need to stop saying that these are corporations that are coming in and taking our town, because it's just not, it's not factually correct. So that's just point one. That said, I think there becomes a problem eventually, and, you know, I've been asked the question of what are we legislating? Why are we doing anything about this? And why aren't we letting the free market decide? Well, the, the free market doesn't exist on the plaza. If the free market existed on the plaza, we would allow for Banana Republics and J. Crews and McCulloughs and Macy's and everybody to go in there. We don't allow for that. We legislated that. If the free market existed on the plaza, we'd allow for specifically as many realty shops as wanted to exist on the plaza. We stopped that. We blocked that. We'd allow for as many banking institutions. And I don't know about you, David, but I would call the fact that we don't have Banana Republics and J. Crews on the plaza, good government regulation. And there's a thousand other examples of great government regulation, and it does kind of irk me when you just lambaste government regulation up here, because I'm very glad to know that my meat doesn't have E. coli on it, and I'm very glad to know that when I get on a plane, it's been checked, and that's a requirement. Those are all regulations on business. So government has a role in regulation. Full stop. Yeah, sure, I'll take it. There, we have to look at what the future could hold. If we don't, if we don't do any amount of stopping on this, how many more tasting rooms do we get? Okay? People are comfortable with the current number in the downtown district of 34. I don't find it that onerous personally, but if it gets to 45, 46, 52, these are becoming bigger and bigger problems, right? At a certain point, there's too many. And I don't trust the free market to stop at a certain point and say, hey, there's too many of these, we're going to stop here. I think it's going to keep going. So I think that we have to put a limit in there. As far as what the limit is and where they are, I mean, to the question about whether type 42s and type O2s, which one should we regulate? I mean, I think we heard the city attorney be pretty clear that if we allow for type 42s and not type O2s, then we might as well not have a regulation at all, because anybody could open a type O2 and be a tasting room. And so we have to regulate both if we're going to regulate anything, because otherwise they'll just apply for a type 42, and then we're back in this seat later on. As far as, you know, the, the letter from Sonoma Valley Vintners and Growers, I appreciate the comments about Santa Barbara, but I don't know where Sonoma's most known is. I don't know where our dilapidated manufacturing plants are in Sonoma. I couldn't point to them. The majority of the city is fairly vibrant, and that's a benefit. And these comments about retail is dead, certain types of retail are dead for sure. There are certain types of retail that are dying, but tourism retail, which is what we have, I mean, like, people are buying $32 candles. They're going to continue to do that because they're on vacation and they want to get something nice for somebody back home that isn't wine? Or maybe they have a friend that doesn't drink, or they just shop, walking around shopping? Like, that type of retail survives. Will continue to survive, because it's nice to go in a shop and grab something and touch it tactically with your hands, because we're not just internet people, we're human beings, and we like to touch shit, stuff. Jeez, I'm getting too passionate. It's just, it's just a reality. I don't like to go shopping online for clothes. I like to put it on and see how it fits my body. That's, I guess that's weird. So retail spaces are going to continue to survive, and, and we need to create opportunities for a mix on the plaza, because I think part of what attracts people to the plaza is that there is a mix. And when you go to Napa and it's just, you know, Disneyland tasting room after Disneyland tasting room, I've talked to tourists, I work in the wine industry currently. I talked to, to tourists that come here and say, they don't like that, they prefer Sonoma because it's got a uniqueness and it's got a charm. And I think part of that is the limit on the number of tasting rooms that we have. So we have to think about that. Now, as far as this is concerned, and let's talk about the meat a little bit here, I think it's okay to create opportunities for people to open up tasting rooms in other parts of the city. Do, I think they should be permitted. I guess I'm comfortable with that. They should have a permanent review process so that we start to kind of know where they're going, and we don't just create another problem. Although I don't think that they really leave the plaza that much. I think it's really hard for tasting rooms to succeed and be successful off the plaza. We saw this recently with the Roan Room. I had trouble being successful out there. I know that tasting rooms that are just off the plaza, like not plaza-facing, have, have problems. It's tougher to get people to get down the alleyways, so. So I don't know that it's a big problem, but if people want to do a permit, that's fine. I sort of feel like the downtown district and the prod, only people on council and on Planning Commission, like, know what those two distinctions are. I think for the general public, if you're walking around the plaza and you go to where Sa is, or you go to where Artur is, you feel like you're still on the plaza, you don't feel like you're in a completely different area. So I think regulating the overall downtown district makes sense. I'm fine with 30. I'd be comfortable with 31, 32. One per block phase, I'm okay with the, the Planning Commission going for two per block phase. I think the 60 days is totally fine. What else do we need? Anything else? Okay. Oh, I had a couple other questions, so two other things, and I'm sorry, I know I'm taking a lot of time. I apologize to everybody.
Take your time.
Thanks. I, I think that we should consider limiting by case, case number, and I wonder if council feels this way, too. Number of cases ensures that we don't get large corporations, so if we can legislate based on number of cases produced by the winery, I would set that limit somewhere around 30,000. The vast majority of tasting rooms on the plaza are producing significantly less than that. I know there's some that are, have multiple, more than one brand, and those brands aren't- Um, I know there's some that are, have multiple, more than one brand and those brands aren't just on the plaza. So how do we deal with that? Um, I think, I think still 30, 40,000 allows a lot of room for that. Um, so I would like to see that discussion happen. And, and again, I think that the local production, I brought this up at the first one. I think requiring 10 to 20% of local, locally sourced fruit. And I'm talking Sonoma Valley and Carneros. Uh, Sonoma Mountain, Moon Mountain District, Sonoma Valley, Carneros, um, would be fine. And I think that keeps Sonoma branding correct. I think it keeps the wine focused on Sonoma and I think it raises the station of, of what our wines are and what they produce. And all of my comments there.
Okay.
Councilmember Ragman? Could I ask the vice mayor? So here's what I've learned. I mean, it sounds as if you're saying just the valley and four. But I understand that sometimes vineyards use a varietal of grapes. Some could come from somewhere else. So those are things that should be allowed because they look for their quality of taste. So is that what you were saying to limit the varietals that come?
So no, not varietals, definitely not varietals. I love Syrah as much as the next person and off varietal stuff is great. Um, but I'm saying 20% of your overall production should come from Sonoma Valley. 80% can come from Sonoma Coast, can come from Napa, can come from, if you want to do an Oregon Pinot like, like Walt does, that's fine. But 20% at least has got to come from here. You gotta have some amount of Sonoma Valley representation to be on the plaza. I think that's fair.
Um, okay.
I like that. Sure.
Um, so the grape sourcing, which we've gotten emails and letters about that. To me, it's something that seems like the, uh, our local industry would find helpful. But it's been influential to me that they, the prevailing view from the local industry is that it's not something that they are interested in. Um, I think just because of, it's just one more layer of, uh, sort of regulations to deal with. And I know that it would be, make it harder for staff to do with it, deal with it as well. So even though I, I feel like it sounds like a good idea, it, uh, that the peep, the industry that I feel that would be helping, it doesn't seem to want it. So that's the reason that I'm not supporting that.
Okay. Um, so a lot has been said. I guess I just was starting my thinking, sort of the heated debate about this, it almost feels like this is a novel invention of the town of Sonoma, which it certainly is not. And so this has happened in many, many towns and for the same reasons and the same arguments have been hashed out and it has not been calamitous and it has been okay. So with regard to, you know, the idea that we're on the brink of destroying the town, uh, I think there's plenty of evidence that that's just not the case. So I, I, and I understand really clearly why, um, this is problematic for people that are on the plaza because it takes away their ability to move to a new location if that's what they want to do. And it puts a tremendous amount of power and authority into the landlords. And some of our landlords on the plaza are, um, clearly don't have the best interests of our town in mind and they don't live here. And they are totally comfortable with vacancies for, for prolonged periods and things like that. So I understand those issues, but that being said, um, I don't think it's unreasonable to have some regulations, um, about this. Just like opening a restaurant or some other business requires a permit from the city and those permits have requirements with them. It seems, um, seems straightforward to me that we would do that with this as well. And so, um, I think that planning commission, uh, proposal, what I like about it is, if you read our general plan, what we're supposed to be doing, and I recognize there's challenges to this, but we're supposed to be, um, continuing to develop the commercial activity down Broadway. And so we should incentivize that. And so, um, in terms of limiting it on the plaza, not just as a way to control the diversity on the plaza, but as to incentivize other commercial uses down Broadway. So we can have people park further away and have things to walk to. And all of the good things in our general plan about incentivizing people moving down the plaza. I think it's a positive for that. On the requirement of a use permit outside, you know, for the whole city, um, I also think that's good. And, and that is sort of a judgment call of the planning commission. But I think we have a intelligent and informed planning commission now and a good system for picking planning commissioners. So I have trust in them that they're not going to unreasonably deny use permits for areas that are not, um, on the plaza. And with regard to, um, the prod versus the downtown district, I'm comfortable with a narrower area for the limitations along with a use permit for other areas. Um, in the same vein of incentivizing people to open, um, businesses in other places. I do think the issue of how the permits will be available, uh, once they are freed up is, that's a very good question and that has to be answered for sure. Not later, but you know, now. Um, and then also with regard to the notice, I think, I don't know if the requirement should be that in order to apply for a use permit that you would have, let's say you have a, um, I just think, I'm just trying to think if there's additional ways to ensure that the notice is given appropriately. Cause it seems to me that it would never be given and then there will be a constant bickering over whether or not the use was discontinued.
You're probably correct about that. The only thing that I can say is that because we included staff's effort to address that issue was the inclusion of a presumption. If you fail to give the notice and you've had this vacancy, then there's a presumption that, that you've been vacant for the requisite period of time in, in order to encourage the notice to occur. And that was also why we had the tenant and the landlord needing to give the notice because there may be a incentive for the tenant to give the notice, open one up, right? Because the tenant might be moving or versus the landlord. So we, but those were the two ways we thought of incentivizing the question of giving the notice. Short of staff, you know, really starting to pay attention. If in fact, the numerical requirements, which is where that becomes critical and the other instances, it's not critical at all, um, are limited to, uh, the prod only, it becomes a little easier to watch, um, in that it's a smaller geographic area for staff to be, um, for lack of a better word, paying attention to. I think generally staff knows when a building goes vacant, specifically, excuse me, in the prod because it's such a small geographic area and, and able to, you know, city hall's right in the middle of that geographic area.
I mean, I just don't think for any regulation made by government, the idea that somehow the staff, the staff of the time will catch it and report it and take the appropriate action, knowing what these rules are is a reasonable approach.
History would dictate that you are correct about that.
So I guess, uh, the question I have, I mean, I don't know if people would associate a fine with failure to report it or, um, cause really if you have a discontinued use and then you allow a new use and you don't report it, there's no, it's, there's no incentive whatsoever for the landlord to report a discontinued use. And then you would have to prove city, what was the exact last day that the old use was in operation? And that is impossible, I think.
Well, I wouldn't think so because if it was disputed as to whether it was continued or not, presumably there'd be records. If there was a presumption that it wasn't, and then they could always be like, no, we were selling that day. We were open. They would have records. And if they weren't open, they wouldn't have records.
They're all going to be subject to a hearing. So relative to that hearing, we could say, well, you, you need to produce your records then if you have it. If you declare that you were open on January 1 of 2020 and ABC tasting facility was open in your business at that point, show us their sales records for those dates.
I guess then I would say, well, what does open mean? What if I have it and I, I do own it and I don't have it open to the public, but I'm using it as storage during that period and I intend to open it later? I'm just saying it's endless gray area.
Right. I, I agree with the mayor. I'll tell, and I agree with you. Going back years and years and years ago, they used to have a thing called error messages when things were wrong. I don't understand why these permit dates can't pop up as due dates. I mean, how does the DM, well, I better not use DMV. But, uh, but I mean, how do those due dates come up? I think that's the point you're making. Right? I think that there's a point that has to be made. Our system needs to be able to, uh, announce this possibly a month ahead of time or whatever time the businesses say they need to be able to renew or whatever. I think I understand what you're saying.
I mean, it seems like if you really wanted people to do it, you would say, failure to do this would disqualify you from applying for an available use permit for two years. Now you're incentivized to do it. Something like that. I'm just brainstorming. No?
Certainly if the council wants to add some incentives to the reporting requirement, we can certainly do that. Um, and that would be one incentive or, uh, as you previously suggested, some sort of a fine or other penalty for failure to report. Again, you're going to have to prove they did it. So you're still sort of in the same boat, right? Imposing the fine versus starting the time ticking. You're still needing to prove that somebody moved out and, and when it happened.
Oh, sorry.
I, I did want to, um, the, the question relating to, um, wine bars versus wine tasting facilities that came up and I said, we'll look. I have a sort of answer to that question, so I'll try. The Business and Professions Code sets forth the types of licenses and the rules and regulations applicable to each type of license that the ABC issues. Uh, the Bureau of Alcoholic Beverage Control, sorry. In regard, in that regard, a type one license is a beer manufacturer's license issues issued pursuant to Business and Professions Code, section 23357.3. A type two license is a wine grower license. That one's issued pursuant to 23356.1. Each of those specifically, each of those regulations that I just rattled off, that probably no one cares about the sections, allow for, I'll call it, alternatively, one is called tasting and one is called sampling, but it's essentially the same thing. The idea that you are pouring without sale. A type 42 license does not have that particular delineation in the license description in the ABC's regulations. The free pour, if you will. However, when, when a license is issued under type one, type two or type 42, all of those types of licenses may be issued by the ABC without coming to the local jurisdiction to ask the question about, um, public convenience and necessity. So there's this, there's this process that ABC goes through when you have a bar, if you will, which is a totally different type of license that ones, twos and 42s are exempted from. Which means that the 42s act a little bit more like a one and two. They are a wine and beer only license is what they are. But they do contemplate sale. But by way of example, if you go to David's, um, the, the attachment to the map, to the colored map with the stars on it, you have currently in the city, one, two, three, five type 42 licenses. Those are currently issued by ABC to Sonoma Speakeasy, the Sonoma Wine Shop, Anoteca, Sai and Panel. None of those uses currently have use permits under the code, even though it, wine tasting facility type 42 licenses are conditionally permitted uses in the city. I can't answer why they don't have use permits. I can just tell you that according to the planning director, they don't. Under the regulations that are being proposed and before you, we've lumped the wine tasting portion, excuse me, the wine bar function with a 42 license in with wine tasting facilities so that they have to have one type of license. We've left beer manufacturer license, in other words, a 42 that has beer and wine and is actually selling beer and wine in the, needs a regular use, use permit. And the reason for doing that, as we had previously articulated, was the idea that some of the 42s that you currently have, walk like ducks, if you will. In other words, they look like type twos. They are doing wine tasting of some sort, although they are in some instances charging for it. Um, so that's up to the commit, to the council if you want to leave them lumped in or you want us to separate them back out and let them have standard use permits. Um, it's a simple thing for us to do with the ordinance. So I'll leave that to you, to your consideration.
Okay. I guess the question is with all that, how shall we proceed? Does somebody want to take, make a motion? Do you want to take a three minute break and digest all this? Are there thoughts how people want to proceed?
Um, well, I have, um, did a, so the presumption, how, how it's written in here, I think that, uh, I, I like the way that it's, it's written. But were there, um, I know that we had two people for the planning commission ordinance and one person potentially for the staff draft. And I don't know where, where our consensus is. I mean, I can make a motion.
Well, why don't you make a motion and then we can amend it as necessary or attempt to.
Before that, I'd like to ask, is there any interest in pursuing a case limitation or, um, local sourcing ordinance at all?
I'm not comfortable doing that today because I don't have, um, for something, with regard to the local sourcing question, I think that was asked of the industry. And, um, and I also thought that it was a great way to help locals. And the people that are here, it was pretty clear that they weren't interested in that. So it's not, it's not my industry. So I'm not going to impose what I think is right on them, on that topic. And then with regard to the case limitations, I guess the only reason, could I just ask the audience not to talk? Uh, Chair Felder. No, I just don't feel like we've had an opportunity to have a discussion with the industry about what they think about case limitations. And so I would be, I just don't feel like I have the appropriate pros and cons to weigh in my mind about that issue tonight. Okay.
So that speaks for the, so that speaks for everybody then. Okay.
Well, it doesn't speak for everybody, but.
Seems, doesn't seem like I'm gonna say, okay, so no, none of that then.
It, uh, if it's something that, um, the industry think, feels that would help the little guys that they're especially worried about, I'd be willing to consider it.
Maybe just one other thing to keep in mind for council again. You, ordinances take time, right? This is kind of, this has been a complicated, a variety of moving pieces on the, to put this ordinance together. In the future, you could come back and you could focus just on local sourcing and/or just a thing, case limitation. So you could have that conversation and it would be a much more finite conversation and more focused conversation with industry. So you don't have to tackle it today. Um, it doesn't mean you don't have to, that you can't have that conversation again.
And, and I hear what the mayor is saying, not generalizations, but to ask, actually go to the industry and ask those questions. Because I don't think, you know, what I, what's been shared, you know, as you said, I don't know. That's not a bad idea.
And, and also as the city manager mentioned, until we have a use permit available, it's not even relevant. So we do have time to continue to hone this ordinance. Okay. Councilmember Hunley, give it a try.
All right. I would like to make a motion to do a first reading of the ordinance known as Attachment 10, Attachment 2, Prod, Limit Citywide Permit, Permit Ordinance. Is that a sufficient description? Do you want me to read this title?
Um, a couple, um, a couple of things. Uh, you, I don't, I think you should read the title, but, um, the titles are virtually identical. So I'm not quite sure that'll help too much. You're talking about the introducing the ordinance that is the version, which is numerical limitations in the prod and, uh, citywide permit required.
The planning commission version?
We'll call that the planning commission version, certainly. That's probably an easier, they, the two ordinances have the same title. So reading the title won't help.
So the friendly amendment being that I wanted to have a reference to a notice form?
So I, I think we've heard a couple of, um, is that the only amendment the council is interested in? I apologize.
That was just the one I was interested in, but.
Okay. Um, I'd like to actually write that language.
Is there anyone else who had additional items, uh, that they would like considered on the planning commission version proposal? Motion.
I have one additional. Um, we had a speaker this evening. We had a speaker this evening point out that the version of the ordinance, the red line version of Exhibit A to the ordinance, that was attached to the red line changes before you may be incorrect, and I actually think they might be right. So if you could hold that for a second, I need to...
Why don't we do this? Let's find out if there's any other feedback from the council, and then take a quick break to make sure we have everything teed up, and then we'll come back about it.
That would be excellent. Thank you.
Are there any other council members that would like to propose additions or changes to the planning commission motion? Motion to approve the planning commission plan?
I mean, I'd be comfortable going to 27 in the ProD only instead of 25, and, I don't know, I sort of support the tasting room improvements in downtown district, but not citywide, but anyways, okay.
Is that Councilmember Hunley's?
Motion.
Those would be my amendments. So change wine tasting room permits from citywide to downtown district, and increase the number of the limitation to 27 from 25.
From 25?
To 27.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with 27, but I prefer to have the permit citywide.
I will accept the mayor's amendment about the notice, although I'm not, I guess when we come back, you'll read us what the sentence sounds like, but that is it.
Okay. So with that, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Agamone?
You made the motion, so he's changed it.
Well, he proposed to change it to 27, but I would like to keep it at 25 and see how that goes.
Okay, so I propose an amendment to increase the number to 27 and require tasting room permits only in the downtown.
But it's my motion. Only I can change.
I don't know how to play this game yet.
Okay, so what we'll do...
Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
Okay. So what I think is the best thing to do is, is that we will take a brief recess of how long do you need city attorney?
How about approximately?
You can go on to the next agenda item and come back to this one if you'd like. I think we should just finish this up. We have people here on this item.
I think we need at least 15 minutes.
Okay, so let's do 15 minutes. When we come back, we'll have a complete, a clear wait. Let's have a complete, clear understanding of what we're voting on, and then take a vote.
Assuming from the thick of it.
Okay, we will reconvene our meeting here and it seems that our city attorney is prepared to proceed.
Maybe. No, I'm kidding. With regard to the ordinance, my understanding, let me just clarify what ordinance we were introducing and that it was the version that was on the dais in red line that is being introduced. With that clarification, the section that you have requested be amended is section.
So I just want to start, we have a slide on our screens and also up here and it is attachment two that we're talking about, the red one.
Correct, so citywide version.
So you just want to just, it would be great if you would just go through each of the elements so we can be clear. Not reading the ordinance, but I can do it also.
Each of the elements of what this regulates or?
If you look at the slide that is in front of you, there are several elements there. Perhaps you could read them.
Thank you, I can. So attachment two regulates, requires a wine tasting use permit citywide for all new uses, applies numerical limits of 25 only in the prod. Outside the prod, there is no numerical limit. We are requiring, this is where I got a little lost, one or two per block face?
It's two.
Well, and I had during my comments, I said one, but then we didn't discuss this, so.
It's your motion.
Sidebar, I.
I'm comfortable with two.
Okay.
Also comes rolling two.
So leaving it on the.
Wait.
Oh, I apologize.
I will leave it as written with two.
Okay, so two per block face for block faces, block faces facing the plaza as indicated on the map in the ordinance. Nonconformity and abandonment period would be 60 days, so ceasing use for nonconforming use in excess of 60 days would terminate the use. And ceasing the use of a WTUP for more than 60 days would result in revocation of the WTUP. Wine bars are included, requiring a WTUP in all districts. And taprooms continue to be a use permit only, not a WTUP.
And I just had a clarification, by the way, from the chair of the planning commission during our break, that there in fact is a use permit for the speakeasy which they just worked on and approved, just to make that point clear.
Excellent. Thank you. With that then, the change that is being proposed by your, I'll call it straw vote or straw motion, was to nineteen point five zero one two zero subsection C, if I can get there, or maybe it's B.
Can we get that page number in the packet?
I, how about in the, the page numbers changed between the red line version that was passed out and the packet version. So of the red line version that was passed out, it's page eight.
Okay, so we're talking about this document, page eight.
Yes, and the very bottom is the footer, so you want to look at this, you want to look at the citywide version.
Oh, oh, I see.
So it's, you've got redlining in the one that was passed out this evening and it's subsection B, which begins on page eight. Under B two.
You mean page nine? No.
I hope I mean page eight. But you know, I'm looking at an electronic version and they paginate oddly.
Can you just read the beginning of the sentence?
I can. B, nonconforming wine tasting facilities and wine bars. Notwithstanding the provisions of chapter nineteen point eight two, the following shall apply to all nonconforming wine tasting facilities and wine bars in the city.
Oh, B up there, B. Oh, that B. Okay, I was looking at the other B. Okay, all right, thank you.
Ready? Okay, so it's B two that we are adding language to.
Okay, let's wait one sec, please.
While everybody catches up, okay. Page. Both figuratively and literally.
Okay, so, okay, we're ready.
Okay, so B two, nonconforming uses of land. A nonconforming wine tasting facility or wine bar use may be continued, transferred, or sold, provided that, and then we have A, the use conforms to all of the, you have all these additional red linings. Okay, then under three, loss of nonconforming status.
Yeah, okay, so this is page nine, item three.
Correct. First sentence remains the same, second sentence remains the same, third sentence. The owner of the property in which a nonconforming wine tasting facility or wine bar is located, and the owner of the nonconforming wine tasting facility or wine bar shall notify the city clerk on a form approved and provided by the city and delivered to the city clerk of the date that the wine tasting or wine bar use of any site or structure ceases for any period of time and the date that such use is reestablished after a period of discontinuance. Such notice shall be delivered by personal delivery or certified mail to the city clerk no later than 10 days following the date, then any wine tasting or wine bar use of any site or structure ceases.
And then is it necessary to indicate that the city clerk will date stamp it, or that's part of the?
I think that would just be part of her regular routine.
Okay.
And then the last sentence remains the same. And that is the only change. And we have confirmed that the exhibit A attached to this version was correct.
And I just want to clarify one thing, that in terms of the number count, in terms of right now, which is the 25 recommendation from the planning commission, that includes both the type two wine tasting facilities and also the type forty-two wine bars. So just for, we talked about that earlier, I just wanted to, so that limitation is on both those pieces.
Oh, councilmember Cook.
Can I, I just want to ask for some clarification. So if somebody has a wine tasting room and they have an agreement with landlord and they are about ready to renegotiate the lease, can we walk through that scenario really quick based on this motion?
So I think if they go to negotiate the lease, the landlord can either allow the current tenant to sign a new lease or they can say they don't want to enter into a new lease with them and they could get a different new tenant, a different tenant. And then if they wanted to continue with the current use as a tasting room, they would have to have that new tenant in within 60 days of the date that the prior tenant vacated the property because the use could only be discontinued for 60 days. That's my understanding, is that correct?
It is correct.
And what would that do to the rents on the plaza? Wouldn't that make them just go triple? I mean.
I don't think there's any way for us to know the answer to that particular question. It is, I suppose conceivably possible that a landlord could raise rents. He can raise them as high as any tenant would be willing to pay.
No, I just brought that up.
I do think it's fair to say that these properties that currently have illegal nonconforming use will have a higher value because they can attract, retain that current tasting room and/or retract someone else.
Just for the purposes of where we're at in this hearing, if we can limit discussion just to the motion that's pending and not comments or general discussion, I think that'd be helpful. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yeah, what does in within 60 days, what does in mean? Open for business? Or that they've signed a contract to open a business in that place?
Can you go to the portion of the proposed ordinance and read the language that you are, you have questions about that section?
Well, this question, I was just kind of referring to David's question about the 60-day turnover. If you are negotiating a lease, they go to get a new person, what does in look like? What does it look like when the tasting room is?
It's use though, it has to be used for a tasting room in 60 days.
And then we can, that is correct. So right now it says use of the site. We can say actual use. Open for business, if you'd like to clarify that further.
Why can't we define the term discontinued use? Why can't we, or use?
Well, that's what we're.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but in this ordinance, why can't it be defined?
It can.
Oh.
That's what she just offered.
So for the purposes of this section, use means actually open and conducting business to the public.
And that's what you want it to mean. I guess I should ask what you want it to mean.
Is there a definitions section?
No.
Okay. Yeah, there is a definitions section.
That's the overall, those are amendments to the overall definitions section of the zoning ordinance.
I think it could be there.
But we already have an ordinance related to discontinued use, so like there's different, that's why we're shorting the, shrinking the period here. So it's either we could have special rules or it could just be a regular rule, whatever, however that's stated. And then we just have a shorter time period. But it will be, I mean, when it comes down to it, figuring out when it started, when it stopped, whether they stopped, I mean, that's why there's a hearing. And so it's, I don't think that you can, you could probably clarify it a little bit, but I don't, I think it's going to be fact-finding mission if it ever happens.
Almost always, yes.
Can we hear the definition that we currently have of discontinued use? And then while somebody looks that up, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yeah, I just, I think the more clear we are about this, the better. We want to discontinue, we want to disincentivize basically landlords holding it over their head that they could open somebody up there. And the more pressure we have that you have to be open for business, that have to be actual customers in that place working, the harder it is for a business to flip a place in 60 days. To me, that's.
I agree, and the only nuance to that is what if you're doing tenant improvements to the property and you don't have it open to the public during the time that you're doing the improvements? Then do you lose your rights? So we're saying people can't improve their properties?
I would say people can improve their properties if they have the same tenant. So whatever, I don't know what the current ordinance says, and that's a very important piece. So I think you should be allowed to do improvements to your property, but you should not allow to get, be allowed to get a new tenant in there unless they're open for.
Well, but then someone could just say they're doing improvements while they're working out their deal as to who they're gonna.
I'm just saying there's a lot of nuance to what discontinuing a use might look like with regard to whether it's open to the public or not because, because of things like that, like saying you're doing tenants improvement. Councilmember Agramonte? Did you just say, oh, sorry.
I'm good.
Okay.
I don't think it's defined.
Yeah.
Discontinued isn't defined.
Let me try to answer that a little bit here. When you're talking about an abandonment or discontinuance of a nonconforming use, the courts have construed that typically to require both intent and actual abandonment. So if, even if you abandoned for 60 days, if your intent was to reestablish that, you're having very difficult negotiations with your new tenant, there's an argument that you haven't abandoned it. Now, there are a number of ABC license cases that we looked at in preparation for this ordinance. And it's interesting, the courts didn't seem to focus on that kind of criteria. And they were much more strict in just counting the number of days where there had been no operation of a licensee. And found that in at least the ABCs rules, 60 days or whatever the date period was, I forget, was sufficient to terminate the use. But it's a, it's always a question of proof. And it's very difficult to, in an ordinance, list all the criteria that might be relevant to a particular case. So I think we leave it as is. That would be my recommendation and we will, we will handle it case by case.
The current ordinance for standard discontinued, standard abandonment, if you will, uses that same language discontinuance without definition.
Okay, so we have the motion by councilmember Hunley with the amendment concerning notice provided by the city attorney. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Ah, yes.
And Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries four one.
Thank you, everybody. It was a lot of work. So. Okay. And now. Item six point one of the regular calendar of the city council, consideration, discussion, and direction regarding the CASA compact, a 15-year emergency policy package to confront the housing crisis in the San Francisco Bay Area, provide direction to the mayor for action by the mayor's and council members association of Sonoma County, and direction on process for the city to advocate on legislation. City manager, take it away.
Mayor Harrington, members of the council. So let me just briefly say, the item before you is called CASA. It does not stand for anything, means house in Spanish, and it has been a program and a project that's been in the works, kind of a public nonprofit committee working on this with MTC and ABAG for probably almost 18 months or two years. And there are, there's 10 basic policy items that are listed in your staff report. There is a very extensive report that was done by the steering committee and technical committee of the CASA group. And so there's a lot of detail in the staff report. And there's also in the staff report a PowerPoint that was prepared by ABAG MTC, which goes through each of the elements in more detail and a bit of the kind of the why. Again, this is a very aggressive policy statement and policy approach on a wide variety of things. ABAG and MTC did approve this at, I believe, their December meeting. And now there's, there is much more extensive outreach coming out to individual cities now, but unfortunately a little on the back end than on the front end. So I'm just going to read the elements briefly for members of the public that are not here, just the topics, but I'm not going to go through them in detail. So again, there's 10 elements. Element one is about just cause eviction policy. Element two is a rent cap, looking at their. Element three is rent assistance and access to legal counsel. Element four is removing regulatory barriers for, barriers for accessory dwelling units. Element five is minimum zoning near transit, which allows additional height requirements, more kind of by right around zone, around transit areas. Element six is good government reforms to housing approval process. This basically takes some local control away from cities. So for example, you can have no more than three public hearings on projects, just to give one example. Item seven is expedited approvals and financial incentives for select housing. So these are additional SECO exemptions and limiting, reducing parking requirements, tax breaks, and higher density. Element eight is unlocking public land for affordable housing and calls on the state to define a list and provide options of where there might, where they may have surplus or utilized properties. It requires us to create a jurisdiction, a list of things that we have that would be available. Element nine is funding and financing, and this is a very comprehensive list of basically financial requirements on developers, on cities, on sales tax. And, and there is about 1.5 billion that's estimated to be raised that then goes back to a. 1.5 billion that's estimated to be raised, that then goes back to a new regional body for allocation out. And element 10 is the Regional Housing Enterprise, which is a regional, basically, new entity that would oversee these policies and the funding. So, as Mayor Harrington read in the title, this is, cities within Sonoma County are reviewing the CASA Compact, asking for direction to the mayor, who sits on the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers, and is anticipated that that group will be taking some action on this. In addition, our own Councilmember Hunley is Chair of the Legislative Committee for the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers, and she may have items to report because they're looking at this as well. So, this compact was a policy statement. Now, what's occurring is the state legislature and individuals legislators are bringing up basically legislative bills that then in, basically, implement a number of these items. There's not one comprehensive bill, there's multiple bills on some topics, and there's probably more bills to come. So, the other item the staff put on here is really a question of how does the council want to respond to these types of things as we move forward? And there's a, kind of, a sweet spot of staff. We do not have the resources to respond on every single one of these bills, we just don't have that legislative depth. And, and yet, there, some of these things are fairly important, and the council may want to take action. So, one suggested recommendation we had within the staff report is potentially, Councilmember Hunley and Mayor Harrington, if there, if the council comes to some agreement about what you think about CASA, then potentially, as a subcommittee, they might draft a letter that maybe is based on what's coming out of the Ledge Committee, that could be signed by the mayor on behalf of the council, or if you want items to come back to you. So, these, these pieces, these bills are going to be moving quickly. So, the question is, what kind of role and voice do you want in that? And obviously, as individual electeds, you can write your own letters and that type of thing. The question is, as a body. So, with that, we'll take any questions.
Great. Does council have any questions about this? Seeing none, I'll take it out to the public for public comment.
Fred Alabach, 19550 A Street East. I've been waiting, comment on CASA for about five and a half hours between last meeting and this meeting. I'm glad I finally made it. I would suggest that the, that the council suggests to the mayor to strongly support the CASA 1 through 3 tenant protections measures, because those are the most vulnerable people. And those are the people who are the area median income, who are actually the majority of the people who are hurting because of the housing crisis. And to the extent that CASA is going to end up producing primarily market rate housing, I would say, don't support that, because that's what nobody can afford. So, that's, that's not going to work if, if that's the, the primary type of housing that's, gets built as a result of CASA. And then, I would go for getting proportional value for the city and the valley for whatever money the city puts in, try and get as much value as you can back, and don't have it go to a black hole in San Francisco. But Sonoma has to meet its proportional needs, so we should, if we're paying, we should get proportional value back, just like with the police situation, you want to make sure you're getting your money's worth. And so, and we're, and we're doing our share of the responsibility. We can't do our share if, if we're paying, but not getting the money back. I think that overall, the wheels of government at large levels turn in ways that don't necessarily mesh with the smaller levels, and it doesn't make sense. But the reason why a lot of these CASA things are in there is because things were checkmated at the local level. So, I think that to a certain extent, it's good to try and force the hand and break the logjam here with this CASA. I know there's some troubles with it, but in general, I support the idea of, of breaking things up and getting some stuff going, even if it means a little bit of loss of local control. That could also be something that the council recommends fair for the mayor and Councilmember Hunley to bring, is that, you know, you, you want local control, but you got to commit to breaking the logjam, too, and getting some stuff done, and getting the housing done. So, CASA is, is big, some people are scared. Dave Ransom was here, and he wanted to comment, and he, his comment was for you to be really cautious of it. And I'm a little more optimistic about it, and that's my comment.
Thank you, Fred.
Again, Tom Conlon. Let's see, so, I'm referring to the matrix of legislation that's in your packet, and all I have to add is, well, I'd like to underscore what Fred just said about the early things in that list, are the ones that I think many of us in the community are, are concerned about. We feel that many of the other portions of the compact have lots of interest groups behind them, but the, I know, I've heard that many of the tenants' rights people pulled out after the CASA compact was sort of reaching this stage, because they felt like their concerns weren't being necessarily reflected by the supposed consensus group. So, I would, I would encourage you to remain watchful about that. I noticed there was no legislation associated with the rent cap, and I did come across a bill, AB 1482, which has been introduced by David Chu, which would, I think, follow the kind of bills that have passed in other places like Oregon, which are effectively, I think of them as kind of weak rent control, weaker compared to what many cities have that have rent control. And they're essentially tied to something like 7% plus inflation, which gets you pretty close to, really, what state law we have. You can't gouge people after a disaster, more than 10% rent increase. Well, that's pretty much what would be allowable as a rent cap increase. Think of it as more as a gouging cap, is the way I phrase it. I also think there may be a bill called, I think Bloom may have introduced something that would repeal CASA Hawkins for cities who currently do have rent control, but this would allow rent control on properties that are newer than 10 years. I don't have a bill number for that one, but I'd encourage you to keep your eye out for that. And then, on just cause eviction, the first measure in the package, I understand that the city of Inglewood recently passed an emergency rent cap and just cause eviction after a particular apartment complex raised rates 138% down in, in Inglewood. So, those kind, those are the kinds of things individual cities are, in that case, an individual city's trying to do. So, just encourage you to pay attention to that. I believe that, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the Sustainable Sonoma Council, but I believe that the council is trying to bring some experts in some of these areas to, to Sonoma to bring all of us up to speed on the technical issues involved in these various different elements. Look forward to those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Hello, Ankaletis 14 Hacienda, Sonoma. Well, the city manager said a couple of really things that are quite relevant. First of all, CASA doesn't stand for anything. And the other thing is that there's a lot of bills here, and they're going to move really fast. And the ones that are going to move fast are the ones with juice behind them, we all know that. And the ones that are, are going to, really, the first three are like lipstick on a pig, as Tom was saying. You know, the tenants' people couldn't be behind this. The CAA couldn't be behind it. So, I mean, it's really, 1, 2, and 3 is, it makes the whole thing look good, but it doesn't look good. It doesn't. And the other thing is with the funding, I think that it really, looking, looking down the line on funding, I mean, a city like Sonoma, you know, like many cities, you know, they have pensions to pay and all kinds of things, talking about all the, the rates of all kinds of things going up. And this, this funding isn't going to go away, it's just going to be in perpetuity as for the length of the CASA enterprise. So, it really is, I was in the room with ABAG, at MTC for the ABAG vote, there was really no happy faces in that room to speak of, except the head of MTC, who got a great big cake, because he was leaving. So, he got, they, he got his vote that night and went off to his happy retirement, left everybody else sitting there, holding the A-bag. So, anyway, there was a great sign that said, that said, you know, this is regional, regional development at, planning at its worst. And so, anyway, it'll be interesting to see what happens, but I encourage you to act with due diligence and, oh, I know, one more thing. There is a bill, I don't know the number, but it's about starting to track rental housing. What is, getting data on renters, where the rental properties are, and that's a statewide bill, and I think that'd be useful. Thanks.
It is always nice to see you. Thank you. Top that.
Bill 873 for Street West, how about that? Mayor Harrington and members of the city council, I urge you to reject the CASA compact until there's been adequate input from our community. The council should oppose the state legislation that further erodes local control over local planning and zoning. As you know, there's a lot of legislation moving very quickly that supports the CASA idea at a statewide level. The local control that those state bills will remove from the city of Sonoma is extensive. The housing supply, housing supply is an issue in the Bay Area, but the CASA compact is not the solution, and the MTC is not the agency to entrust to this, with this charge. The MTC has not represented the citizens, or does not represent the citizens of Sonoma. The CASA steering committee composed primarily of representatives of the development interest. Anti-sequel attorneys do not represent us. The mayor of Rona Park, the mayor of Santa Rosa, Supervisor Rabbit, do not represent us. State Senator Scott Weiner certainly doesn't represent the city of Sonoma. You are our representatives, and you should hear from your constituents how they feel a regional agency and state senators and assembly persons taking away local control of land use decisions and imposing parcel and sales taxes without their vote represents them. The nexus between growth and approval of large corporate office centers in three major cities in the Bay Area is a primary cause of this housing problem. The cities allow tremendous job growth in communities without requiring or mandating housing meet the need of this employment base. Sonoma now is being asked to fulfill part of that. Sonoma has actually, for the most part, done a really good job in meeting its regional needs. Our development code, when it was produced 20 years ago, actually foresees all of this. It has 20-unit, 20-unit to the acre densities, it has 20% inclusionary housing, it has infill inclusionary housing. It, it, it promotes density bonuses when the, when the right mix of housing is produced. It actually advocates, while it doesn't put policy specifics to it, it advocates workforce housing in the mixed-use, high-density areas. CASA actually advocates market rate housing as a way of solving the housing problem in the Bay Area. It hasn't, and it won't, because it's not the housing problem in Sonoma or the Bay Area. We produce a lot of market rate housing. It's unaffordable, basically. Compact elements 1, 2, and 3, I believe, are issues that should be related, that should be, that should be locally controlled decisions. The idea of rent control.
I just want to tell you that since you waited five hours also on CASA, feel free to finish your remarks.
Thank you. This is, you know.
Thank you for being here, twice.
There should be three minutes for each of these elements, at least.
Well, probably not that, but.
But anyway, this is where I'm going to go. I, I'm a, I'm a local property owner, I'm also a local landlord. I own a small building, one. The rent on my, on my apartment, from the date that I first owned it to today, has gone up by $600, and that's 12 years. It also went down by $600 when no one could afford the rent. So, it's not just a one-side deal here. You want to remove rental housing from the rental market? Control the rents, and people will take their rental properties off, cash them in, or use them in a different way. Rent control is not the solution, producing rental housing is a solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Hi, Stephanie Hiller again, 516 Seventh Street West, in Sonoma. You won't believe this, but I was actually at the Cal Economic Summit this year in November. And that's one place where this information started to come out, which was, the McKinsey report had said that the state needs 3.5 million houses in the next, like, seven years, seven years from the McKinsey report. There was an atmosphere of celebration, even though it was the day after the Paradise Fires, the energy at the Cal Summit was kind of high. And to me, what it made me wonder about, and then when I saw CASA come out, was, you know, this, that there was a housing boom coming. We need houses, and there's money to be made. And it's exactly the thing that the no-growth atmosphere of the 70s and the 80s, you know, was worried about, that we would have a housing boom that would put little tiki-taki houses all along the hills and all these places. And so, there was a lot of effort to preserve open space, good thing, but, and not at fault for this, but it's like a, a change, a total change in consciousness or awareness or thinking about what, how we want to house people, because now there's room to build houses really, really fast, and with legislation through the CASA, that could happen. And so, I have a few questions about that. And one of them is, what is the definition of affordable? This is a really kind of key question, and I've heard one comment on CASA, I, I can't give you a source on it, but it was like, it comes down to affordable housing for Silicon Valley sta, you know, employ, lower-level employees, like people who make $100,000, $120,000 a year. So, I know that doesn't include me as, you know, a low-income senior in this county, but not only me, but people quite a bit in better financial shape than I am. So, so, all of those people from, you know, retired seniors on low income to disabled people, all the way up to teachers and nurses and so on, we don't have enough money for that level of affordable, so I would ask you to really be wary about the affordable definition. And then, so that's, what kind of housing are we going to have? If we're going to build a whole lot of housing, and we have climate change rolling in with the fog in the next 12 years, are we including climate change in our planning for this kind of housing? And in what sense are we doing that? How are we going to, it's not just building houses near transportation or building houses next door to single-family homes, these things will all be permitted, but under CASA. It's also just still relying on cars, still using the wrong kinds of materials, still not supplying full-scale renewable energy sources, and not creating community. It's the, it's the old, it's the, you know, the Amazon culture, if you will. It, it's the culture of people who spend their social time in front of a screen and are not having the opportunity to really build community together. And that is, building community, growing food, living on, closer to the land, have to be considered if we're going to make it through climate change, much less prevent it. So, please keep climate change in, in the picture. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for council comments. Councilmember Hunley?
So, I am the Chair of the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Legislative Committee, and what we do usually is, bills proposed in the state legislature that affect the city, the nine cities in Sonoma County, we get together, we talk about the bill, we decide whether it's helping us or hurting us, and then we vote whether we want to take a position on it, and we sometimes send letters of support, and sometimes send letters of opposition. But since the CASA compact has been a popular item of discussion lately, we took this up at our meeting last week to talk about, and the, in, in the end, we ended up taking the position of a general oppose, and then we focused on two overarching issues that we all had with it. And I would like to briefly explain those. The first problem that I think a lot of small cities have is the, was just the process that led to the development of this document, and it brands itself as this collaborative appro- And it brands itself as this collaborative approach, and that's how they're marketing it to state legislators now, is like, everyone came together and created this document, and now you can do it, and you're going to make everybody happy. But of course, we know that's not actually what happened. So that's what it's being branded as, and it's just, it wasn't, it was only after this thing, within the course of three weeks, went from like low-level committee work to suddenly being proposed for a vote right after Christmas. So in addition to just the process issues, the two categories that we focused on, one were the, our issue with the one-size-fits-all approach to density and land use decision-making. And that was considering the fact that Sonoma County is urban, suburban, and rural. And, you know, some of the absurd consequences is like Cotati, a city of 7,000 people, under CASA would have a seven-story building inside of its city, and it's smaller than Sonoma is. And for a lot of the land use planning, it's really frustrating for, you know, to think about a situation like that, or anywhere where we've tried to come up with a plan. You know, a lot of the cities have smart stations, have plans that go with those. And, you know, when you start adding, you know, mostly market rate housing in places where you weren't planning on it, then you end up with an infrastructure problem, because suddenly now you're going to have to get more people in and out of a certain area. But what comes along with it is that it cuts down impact fees, which is something that Sonoma's never really collected anyway, but we're going to, you know, try to start, but, you know, we're not even going to have that. And it's just, you know, this problem of sort of moving people in haphazardly without really thinking about who's going to take care of them, and who's going to pave their roads, and who's going to give them services. So then the other main issue was the funding strategy, because they want to raise a lot of money, and a lot of money seems really good. But it's, so they're putting all nine counties together, and, you know, they're going to do different things, property tax, sales tax, all these things. And then we send all of our money to a central agency, and then they send most of it, but not all of it back. So they keep some of it. And so it's like officially it becomes Sonoma County is going to be subsidizing Santa Clara for their lack of foresight when they did not build housing to house their tens of thousands of workers that have much higher incomes than we do up here. So those were the two main points that we had the biggest problem with. We decided to do a general oppose to the whole thing, because even though there are some details that seem like kind of good, the problem is that the implementation, which is going to be probably close to 200 state bills this year, are not in any way connected to each other. So there's no guarantee that you're going to get all of it. In fact, I mean, I think we could probably guess, like, some of it's probably not going to happen. It just, it does, they like started off with like these three things that everyone's like, that would be so awesome, but, you know, the first bill out the gate was, you know, the SB 50 that's all about streamlining development. So that's what we did. And then also, I don't know if my colleagues have seen the letter from the city Cotati, which was a much longer, but well-thought-out letter that kind of takes them all point by point. I think this is a really great letter. But I think that at this point, what would be effective coming from the city of Sonoma would be to do something more in line of what my committee did last Friday, because it's kind of like building sort of the opposition. And it's, I mean, cities, even the South Bay cities hate this, which is the hilarious part about it. Everybody hates it. So it's just sort of stacking on another name to this thing.
Well, maybe I'll go. I don't support this. I think that, well, for a variety of reasons, but number one, if we look at the issue of basically reducing the rights under SEQUA, first of all, that is something that the people of California won. That's a victory, that we can't just allow people to pollute our environment, and we're working towards, you know, like in our whole country, we're supposed to be working towards like swimmable and fishable waters, and we have had extensive periods of environmental pollution and degradation, which we are working against. So the idea that we're going to build housing and then say, we don't care what the impacts are, let's just pollute our streams and have our sewers overflowing, I don't agree with that, and I think that's bad. And then in terms of limiting the number of hearings, I also think that's ridiculous and is completely against due process. And all of the times when we've had multiple hearings on a matter, almost all of the times, there's been, in our town, you know, really nuanced and articulate discussion about very serious matters, which oftentimes has wound up with projects being improved or not having bad projects approved. So I think that the amount and level of discussion here is fantastic and not something to be limited. With regard to whether or not the, for our town, our current policies stymie the development of affordable housing, there's no evidence to support that whatsoever. There's the project on Broadway, the 49-unit project, the most dense project ever approved in the city of Sonoma. It went through one appeal, it was very short, it's approved to be built. There's constant efforts to look for, you know, additional sources of funds and things to do. So there are not, this is not a town where development is being squashed. And then in addition to that, you know, I think we're seven units off of our arena numbers, and so there just isn't evidence that, with the standards that were set forth of the development, that our town can withstand that we are not meeting those because of, I don't care for this word, but NIMBY roadblocks. I don't think that's the status of this town. And then also with regard to disregarding historic areas, I think that's a huge, a tremendous mistake to try and streamline that portion of SEQUA. So I think there's a lot of things in here which developers don't like, which is like protecting our heritage and making sure the environment isn't polluted, and I'm not, I can't get on board with any of that. And those are the ones that are the most likely to pass in these separate bills and not any of the other ones. And in addition to that, a rent cap, even the one proposed isn't a serious rent cap, and that doesn't keep up with wages, and it doesn't apply to single-family dwellings. I mean, I could go on and on and on, but this is a developer giveaway, big time, and a huge taxation on everybody to support the South Bay's crisis when they refused to ask the employers that created that crisis to contribute. And I'm sure that Apple and Google would love for us, the people of Sonoma, to house their workers. I'm sure that'd be great for them, but it doesn't seem like it's in the interest of our town. Vice Mayor Harvey.
I'm going to try not to repeat anything that anybody said, but I'm sure I will. Yeah, I think that, you know, it's tough when you have a regional problem like this that's caused by, I totally agree, Santa Clara County, San Francisco, and huge private industries moving in and not building housing for their workers, and then just kind of saying the solution to our housing problem is to just do buses into San Francisco. It creates a lot of pressure, and it's important that we need to look at housing as a regional issue and a regional solve. When we have issues that are this large, it creates pressure to create regional solves, but there are a lot of problems with this that I have. Taxation, I think, is a huge piece of it. The quarter cent sales tax is going to impact the very people that we're talking about helping, if we're talking about low-income housing, or ostensibly that's who we're trying to help. The fact that real straight transfer taxes were not considered is a huge problem for me. The vast majority of the money that flows out of Sonoma for this, 70% comes back to the county. Where's that going to go? Largely Santa Rosa. That's the primary thing that's going to affect Sonoma on this one, I think. I agree with increasing density around transit areas. Somebody mentioned, Stephanie mentioned climate change. I think that's a really great way to solve climate change, is to put dense housing near transit. But we have to be respectful of the communities that we're doing it to and where it makes sense in Santa Rosa and Petaluma. It doesn't make sense in Cotati. And I know Cloverdale starts to get concerned about putting in the Smart Train, just because it makes it a punishment. So I think it was just a really ham-fisted approach at solving that problem, and regionality wasn't considered. As far as element seven, that's just, it's just an obvious developer giveaway across the board on that one. 20% for 80 to 150 AMI. In San Francisco, you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars as their AMI, so the rents there are going to be high, and then you're getting a 35% density bonus, major reductions to parking. Those are things that developers really want, and they're really not giving that much for it. And then as we've seen in Sonoma, when people build this inclusionary housing, they often build it smaller, further away, kind of as an afterthought rather than a real substantive piece of the whole. I agree that the protection elements of this, the first three, rent cap, just cause eviction, rent assistance, I like all of those elements. I agree with the mayor that 5% is not a real, it's not a real rent control. It doesn't keep up.
Yeah, plus 5%.
It's over, yeah, 5% over CPI. Yeah, that would limit, I think it's got to be lower if you're actually talking about keeping people in homes, and I don't think any of those three are going to pass. Yeah, so there's little pieces of this that are okay, but the vast majority, as a whole hog thing, it doesn't work. It's not right for our community. It's not right for the county. I appreciate that there was an attempt at a regional solve, and I think that we need to continue down that road and find regional solutions. But I think absolutely Santa Clara County, Sunnyvale, those people, those communities owe us a lot more housing. I think the companies that brought these jobs, that those areas have to be the people that bear the brunt of the cost, both in terms of loss of local control and in terms of monetary costs.
Councilmember Agramonte.
Sure. You know, it's interesting. When I was in high school, and you know when you take algebra in all those classes, English, you go, when am I going to ever use this? Today is the day. I love the word harbinger. So I'm saying, I said for months, this is the harbinger of things to come. They want to take it, get whatever they want, roll through the town of Sonoma, not pay attention to anything, the density, you know, density. I know that San Francisco is paying millions of dollars for teacher housing, but it's, and it's 35%. But they've got the money. We don't have, and we never win here in Sonoma. The transportation hubs, that could be six people. We still don't get recognized for having transportation in an area. So I'm so excited to be able to use this word. And, you know, as a small city, we really fight for every dollar, and I think just until recently, with the homelessness issue and some other issues, we really are getting, making some, you know, ground. So I'm excited about that. But that's harbinger of things to come. This is it right here. It's all, all these 10 elements should go under the word harbinger. So I don't support this.
Thank you, Madeline. Councilmember Cook.
I won't take up much time. I will not be supporting this. I believe in local control, like I've been saying for six years. There are some things, some of these elements that make sense for local jurisdictions to implement, and we don't need to be told by the big regional boards how we should run our city. Because when you go to Safeway and you see me and you're a constituent, you can come and talk to me. Most people on this list that are way down there, you would never even get an email back. So I will not be supporting this.
Okay, I think I have direction there. So, next item?
Just one question, Mayor Harrington, question on legislation. How does the council want to, do you actively want to write any letters on this? Do you want to let just the ledge committee, mayors and council members do that? Or do you want to have a subcommittee where on occasion you, you know, if it's falling within the general comments of the council, you would have a subcommittee that is maybe, again, using the work that comes out of the ledge committee to draft a letter or to send either a support or an opposition? So that's the other piece of this.
How about a motion to authorize myself and Rachel Hunley to take steps necessary to support this council's unanimous statements in opposition to the CASA compact, whatever those may be?
And you may use harbinger in your.
And I will use harbinger for sure. Was there a second? A roll call?
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Good. Great. Okay. Item 6.2, consideration discussion and possible action to review letters of interest received and give direction to Mayor Harrington regarding nominations for appointees to regional commissions and committees on behalf of the Mayors and Councilmembers Association of Sonoma County and the City Selection Committee. City Clerk.
As we've just discussed in the last item regarding the Mayors and Councilmembers Association of Sonoma Valley, that board also, they have the ledge committee, they also make appointments. The Board of Directors makes appointments to regional commissions and committees throughout the region. And at their next meeting on April 11th, they will be considering the six or five appointments, plus another one that will be considered in our next meeting. But the commissions that they'll be considering, the City Selection Committee will be looking at the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the Airport Land Use Commission, and the Local Agency Formation Commission. And the Board of Directors will be looking at the ABAG Regional Planning Committee and the North Bay Division League of California Cities Executive Board Position. At this time, the staff is asking that the council consider giving direction to Mayor Harrington, who's also the chair of those committees, as far as who, if you would like to put names forward. One thing, the City Selection Committee appointments, those names that are put forward were actually put forward to the Board of Supervisors, who would be making the actual appointments.
Are there any questions?
I just wanted to add something, because this was a point of confusion in my meeting on Friday. The way the code is, that the Board of Supervisors has to pick from the collection of names that's nominated for, to the Board of Supervisors by the committee.
Oh, okay. Helpful.
They didn't nominate anybody.
Okay. That's good to know. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay. So I thought we might start by doing the Airport Land Use Commission, the LAFCO, and the LOC C North Bay, because there's only one person who's applied for each of those. And I would say, all those in favor? Can a motion to, okay, yeah, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Motion passes, 5-0. Okay. So then let's take the MTC, and we are authorized to recommend up to three people to the Board of Supervisors, or no one, whichever we like. And I think the easiest way to do it is to start with Jake McKenzie. So maybe we can just do a roll call on Jake McKenzie. Yes or no? Or a motion to, oh, I guess there has to be a motion, sorry.
I have a motion in a second.
I'm not going to make that motion.
I was just going to suggest that that could be one where maybe no nomination would be appropriate.
I'll second that. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Agramonte?
No.
Councilmember Hunley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
No.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Motion fails three to two.
Okay, do we have another motion? You just voted against Rachel's motion.
I know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know. I want to know if they have a name that they want to suggest. I'm interested in hearing.
No, I'm still with Jake, I'm still, I still recommend Jake McKenzie.
Okay. Why?
Why? I'll tell you why. Because, first of all, we can do whatever we want, the board's going to make a decision on whomever they want. I don't know if it filters up the recommendations. The second thing, when I was on a couple of larger agencies, I don't know how the voting went at the MTC. First of all, it's a regional board, and we fought very hard on the Sonoma Valley Waste Management Agency, because you used to have to have a majority vote. And that meant, if you wanted a project and you didn't get 100% of the people on that board, you lost the project. So I don't know what their method of voting is, but I do know that Jake McKenzie, he just represented the region. And look, now we're going through the exercise of city by city suggesting things. Even, I don't even know what it's going to end up like, because if, if it's even weighted in someone else's favor, you know, and it's interesting, all the stuff that went on, and he still ended up there. Steven Bertle Bowe is such a wonderful guy. He's the Sierra Club, I think, a wonderful guy, but he's not even, he's not an elected person. And he doesn't have anyone to answer to, so he can really do whatever he wants. But he's still an honorable person. But I think Jake McKenzie, I don't know. But I think Jake McKenzie, I don't know what the situation was for him to vote in the way that he did, but it's almost not relevant any longer because the cities are looking at it. This is what I understand. So they'll be able to share that information of who they want, but I still think it's up to the Board of Supervisors.
So a point of clarification, I think Councilmember Hunley found out that the Board of Supervisors cannot appoint someone if they are not recommended. Is that correct?
Well, this is what the, it says, "One member each from Marin, Napa, Solano, and Sonoma Counties. The City Selection Committee of these counties shall furnish to the Board of Supervisors the name of three nominees, and the Board of Supervisors shall appoint one of the nominees to represent the county." So we read that to mean that they can only pick from the people who are nominated by the City Selection Committee? That's the list that they get?
Well, we're just one council. I don't know what the other ones are going to do, but Bertlebauer, God, that would, what would that, that, he's a great guy, but he has no authority or experience to be able to, to do this. So I, you know, I, I wasn't there, but I'm just telling you my experience with large boards. And I understand the vote really was a majority vote to, to accept the compact. So I don't know what that meant. I don't even know what the vote was at that board. So I can't really speak to that.
I can speak to what Jake McKenzie said at the time of the last meeting of the Mayors and Councilmembers Committee that I'm the chair of. He absolutely supports CASA. He does not regret taking that vote without asking people first. He felt that that was his right and that his role is to represent the entire board, every single person that's on there, and not Sonoma County exclusively.
And that's his role as a person who's, who, who is committed to the region, not to us.
But not just the county of Sonoma. I mean, the entire region. So his representation was that he represents the entire body and that he doesn't have any particular allegiance to Sonoma County, so.
So we can disagree.
I mean, that's what he said.
But I'm saying, we can disagree. I agree with him. I don't remember. So I, I'll, I'll make a motion to support Jake McKenzie.
I'll second.
Roll call. Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
No.
Mayor Harrington?
No.
Thank you. Motion fails three to two.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to nominate no one.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Agramonte?
Nominate no one.
No.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Hunley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three to...
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to ABAG, there's two people, Julie Combs and Susan Adams of Roanoke Park. Do we have a motion?
So move to approve them, the two, those, Julie Combs? And who was the other one? What did you say?
Susan Adams.
Susan Adams.
I think for this one, do we pick one? It's only one.
Okay, well, I'm with, I'm, support Julie Combs, pretty bad.
Is there a second?
A second.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
No.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries three to.
Okay, I think that's it on this item. Moving on to council members' reports and comments. Are there any?
I haven't had any meetings. I reported out, Mr. City Attorney, the last time. I'm a meeting I've been, but I did have some comments. We received this...
Love letter?
The love letter. But I just have to say...
I hope that's not a harbinger.
Well, sort of. It sort of is. Because I saw the word impermanence and I thought, is there such a word? I used to be a spelling bee person, so I actually looked it up. And there is a word, impermanence. So I thought, I should apologize. But who might I do that to? Who, 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 who do I apologize for not knowing that this is a real word? That's all I have to say.
A message from the mayor of the city of Sonoma. If you would like to receive an apology from Councilmember Agramonte, please email us and let us know who you are.
Oh, they'll find me.
Okay. City manager, comments and announcements.
Apo, A-P-O-L-G-Y.
Nothing. I'm not going to do the spelling bee tonight. Thank you. Okay. City Attorney. All right. Meeting's adjourned.